I'm just making the rest of the individuals co-hosts, I believe I can monitor that. For usual, I will continue to monitor things, Mr. Gates and you, whenever you are ready, you do your thing.
All right, thanks very much, appreciate it. All right, thanks all for coming. I'd like to call the January 25th, 2021 Situate School Committee meeting to order. This is a remote meeting, so I will need to do it via roll call. So with that being said, Randalini?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hayes? Mr. Hayes? I know he was here. Lim Lam?
Yes.
Gates, yes. And there's Mike, did we lose him? Mr. Hayes?
We may have lost him. I'll keep an eye out for him.
All right, well, we'll officially call to order at 6:01. I will just mention a couple of things in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of a Public Health Emergency and the Related Emergency Executive Order dated March 12, 2020. Town and City Public Meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available via Zoom by the raise hand function. Community members can also email me at email address P Gates, P as in Peter, gates@sit.org with comments. I also like to mention I did, I have disabled the chat, that function is not available during this meeting. And with that being said, we will move forward on the agenda. I also like to state, I, we are, we are all remote, so my, for some reason, my Wi-Fi at home sometimes can be finicky. So with that being said, Vice Chair, Mr. Long, will assume my role if I do disappear. Okay, Mr. Long?
Sounds good.
All right, so with that, we're going to move forward on the agenda. We're going to celebrate student learning and I'm going to hand it to Principal of the Gates Middle School, Mr. Ryan Beatty.
All right, good evening, School Committee. Thank you very much for inviting us to present this evening. I'm going to share my screen and introduce my co-presenter tonight. We tonight are going to be presenting about our language-based program at the middle school. It's one of our newer programs. It's a program that was supported by the school committee and the community in the last two years, and we thought what better way than to show our gratitude for the support than to celebrate the success of the program? So I wanted to introduce Lori Mccone. Lori Mccone is the lead teacher in the language-based classroom. We also have two of our professionals, Ellen McAllister and Brian Fox, who support our program. And our goal tonight is to share just a little bit about what the program is and then to highlight some of the successes at the very end. So I'm going to present. And if you can just give me a thumbs up if you can see this, perfect.
It looks great, you can see it.
Excellent. So just to frame kind of why we chose to celebrate this program, our school this year in working towards two goals is really looking towards looking at data points to get a better understanding of who our students are, what their backgrounds are, who they are as people, and what their strengths are as learners and what their challenges are as learners. And when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, we talk a lot about, this year, we've talked a lot about race. We've talked a lot about socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender identity. And one of the things that we also want to include when we talk about diversity is the different learning challenges and learning strengths of our students. And so we at Gates have, as I said, a new program that went into play last year. It's called our language-based classroom. And I wanted to introduce Lori Mccone, who is the lead teacher, who's going to walk us through a little bit about the program.
Yes, thank you, everyone. I'd really like to just thank Mr. Beatty and the School Committee and administrators for allowing me to present on this, for bringing this to Situate. I'm very passionate about this, this program and my students, and I'm really thankful to work in a community that also supports this type of profile and student population. So before I begin, what is a language-based learning disability? So below, the Landmark School identifies a language-based learning disability as this statement. And for those of you who don't know what the Landmark School is, they are a private school located in Beverly, Massachusetts, and they have been, they're considered the leading experts in educating students with dyslexia and language-based learning disabilities. They have been educating students with this profile successfully since 1971. They offer quite a bit of outreach for teachers in the public, in the public schools. They offer, they're very responsive to emails, they offer lots of professional development, and I've had an opportunity to take several courses through their, through their program. So they would define a language-based learning disability as a child who would have either a receptive language disability, meaning that that student would have a difficult time taking in language that is presented orally, but also would show up in your ability to read and comprehend. They would also classify a language disability as an expressive disability, meaning the child might struggle to express what they're thinking and what they know, either speaking with words or putting it in written language. So I'm just going to move to the next slide, Mr. Beatty, thank you. So a student with a language-based learning disability will struggle in one or more of these areas in something they consider the language box. So either it's listening, it's reading, it's speaking, it's writing. So my specific instruction is targeted to students in my program. We target these areas in every element that I can. Every teaching methodology is based on enhancing listening, reading, speaking, or writing. So I'm just going to go to the next slide. The other piece that's really important to consider is, so what does this really mean? A language-based learning disability is actually a disability that's based in the organization and management of language. So if you think about a neurotypical brain, that brain is able to categorize, file, put information in and retrieve that information quickly and efficiently. A student with a language-based learning disability will struggle with that process. So they do not have good systems in place, and we really have to build that executive function piece for them with, with language and management and information. So pretty much everything we do is designed on trying to be systematic in our approach, whether we're in the program or whether we're sort of in regular education. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about our guiding principles. So these, these principles are based on principles that the Landmark School holds true, and we have applied that here at Gates. So step number one for students is that they feel success on day one. That's really, really important. Historically, the students that are in my program, they have struggled all along, and finding success is really hard. So we really take the time to figure out where are they successful, start there. That's how teachers and staff are able to build trust with students. Once we feel that trust, we're able to sort of take risks and apply the strategies that we've got. Number two is this multi-sensory approach to teaching. Students with language-based learning disabilities often don't have a really good understanding of how they learn best. So we try to teach some metacognition there and using sort of kinesthetic auditory visual, and we sort of help students see, I'm doing it this way because this is how I learn best, and I'm going to try to apply that across the curriculum. We try to use micro-units or teaching in smaller parts. Students typically in our program have a lower working memory, so holding on to or memorizing information is really challenging for them. We try to build in smaller units and sort of build, build on from there as we build confidence and, and success. The next piece is that we, we offer a lot, again, for that working memory, we offer a lot of practice and review of basic skills. We're sort of cycling back. And then the other piece of that is, in order to reduce the amount of disorganization, we try to present information in a similar way. So one example of that is like sort of two-column notes. So whether you're in my classroom for math or ELA, or you're in regular education for science or social studies, we try to present that information the same way. So it sort of takes the demand off of like the, the, the executive function, like I have to learn how to do it this way in this class. It's sort of the same foundation as we go through. So we try to build that in. We tend to use a lot of models for students so that they can go back to those models and build their independence, and we really try to offer a lot of choice in student learning. So different options if they want, if we're working on projects. And we also try to build in reflection for these students. So when we take a quiz or an assessment, it's really important the kids go back and see like, this is, this part was kind of hard for me. Why was this kind of hard for you? What can, what goal can I set to sort of try and move forward? So I think that that, that, that's all I had to say, Mr. Beatty.
Great. So we have so much to celebrate with this program. We have the idea that, you know, individual students are growing in their skills, individual students are growing in their independence. Think if you look at the program as a whole over the course of two years. Last year, we had three students in the program. This year, we have nine students in the program. And what that means is that means that we are getting better at identifying who needs what. And when we can offer a program that provides kind of the structures and the instruction and the different modalities of learning and teaching to a specific subgroup of students and keep them in our schools, it is a cause to celebrate. So even just the bar graph on the, on the right, you can see that we are increasing because we are better now at kind of identifying what do students need and how can we kind of match the instruction to that model? The other piece, you know, in terms of kind of getting feedback and shifting how we do things, we work, Lori and her team work very closely with the parents of the students that she services in her program. And it's always interesting to kind of hear different feedback from different stakeholders. And this one, I'm going to read just to you because it's kind of long, but this is a parent of, or I'm sorry, parents of a student who has been in the program now for two years. They said, "Our son, who has been in the program for now a year and a half, originally struggled in elementary school in almost every subject. Although so much effort had been put forth to prepare a new path for him entering middle school, we were hesitant that any classroom environment would ever find any success working around his learning difficulties and overall attitude towards school. Through the enthusiasm, hard work, and determination by his team to help him overcome his obstacles, what started out as small steps quickly became huge leaps of improvement. It's now to the point that as his parents, we no longer even recognize the child that entered the program. He's now a full young man, full of confidence. He's working on his own, using the skills he was taught to cope with stress, planning his workload and tackling each subject one at a time. The most difficult and refreshing change we've seen is his happiness to go to school. He loves his teachers, and although he has his roadblocks, he always seems to work around them with a smile on his face. Plus, the team are miracle workers, and we cannot thank them enough for the caring and nurturing way they have transformed his opinion of himself, which we feel is more important than any subject he could ever learn. From day one, they saw him as a challenge and a puzzle that they were determined to figure out, and they have far exceeded that goal. We couldn't be happier and feel blessed that this team and program exists. Their success shines in every child that walks out of their door at the end of each year, and they are the true definition of what a teacher should be." And so when we transition students into our school and kind of figure out, you know, who are they and what their needs are, it is just wonderful that we have a program at our school that can match the needs of so many students who have not had success, not necessarily as a result of their own effort or the team effort, but that maybe it just hasn't been the right match. And so we're very, very pleased. We are a stronger school because this program is in our school and the students and their individual needs are a part of our larger school. So we wanted to take the time to, you know, celebrate our students. We couldn't get any of them to come and chat with us tonight, but we said we'd represent them. We have many of those families watching tonight. I wanted to thank Lori, and we wanted to kind of open it up to any questions that you have, just because we are a new program, and it's a great program to have at Gates Middle School.
Well, Ryan and Ms. Mccone, I just want to thank you so much for presenting tonight. I think this is, you know, a very important piece of the entire district, and it's great that we can find programs or create programs to satisfy those kids that need it. Can I just ask you a question? I hope it doesn't put you in a difficult spot, but is this a continuation of the GEMS program from the elementary school, or is this separate from that?
So this is, this is a separate program. The elementary does have a language-based program housed at Jenkins, and this is the continuation of that program.
Okay, so this program, as you said, it grew from three to nine. So in an effort to do that, we, did we increase staffing, correct?
We did. We got Ms. Mccone, and we're very grateful for that.
No, the point I was trying to make is that the School Committee helped to make this possible, because I know that we talked a while about how we could help kids exactly like this to fit this role. And I just want to, you know, recognize that the School Committee last year realized that this was important, and we, we approved the budget to reflect this new position, our positions, and I just wanted to make sure that we all understood how we were benefiting the district in this respect. So I really appreciate it. This is great work. And that quote from that family, just, you know, it's kind of why we, partly why I do what I do. So I'm glad that we have you guys and that you've been able to maximize the program. Any other comments from the committee?
Peter, I just have a comment.
Sure.
That I think it's great that we have this program, especially, you know, for the students who we are able to keep in the district, you know, with their peers, instead of sending them out to, you know, a district that, you know, where they might not know somebody, you know. So I think it's great that, you know, they get to still see their friends, even in this, you know, COVID age. But I think, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Once again, thanks very much, Mr. Beatty and Ms. Mccone. It's great work you're doing. Keep it up. And maybe next year, we'll have, you know, we'll still have nine, maybe 12 kids.
Maybe, yes. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, moving forward on the agenda is the student report. I believe that we have Celia Reese here. She may be speaking for all, but I'll hand it off to her.
Yes, I am. Hi, everyone. Thank you again for having me tonight. Here's another report on what's going on in the student body. So last weekend, Molly Nguyen went to a virtual conference hosted by Yale. The students who attended were excited to attend a conference this year despite the challenges of Corona. Sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's fine.
I even told them to call mom. Oh, my God. Sorry, I'm so sorry. The students who attended were excited to attend a conference despite the challenges of Corona and found it to be a positive learning experience. Secondly, some of the students attended the MIAA/MSAA Summit for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, which was an incredibly enlightening and pro-community event, which I personally hope to attend in the future. For those past two events, I went to both of them, and they were great experiences. In homerooms, all students saw a presentation on marijuana drug use last week as part of the series Partnering During the Pandemic to further aid for students during these difficult times. Sophomores and juniors have an opportunity to take the SAT this Tuesday, which is another good opportunity to keep our academic lives on track. We're all lucky to have that. The second quarter, the first, the second semester is coming to a close, I'm sorry, the first semester is coming to a close in the upcoming weeks, which puts an extra focus on academics for all students. Similarly, the winter seasons of sports ends early February, and although much of the seasons were interrupted by Corona precautions, athletes are glad to be back for the remaining few weeks. Also, lots of SHS band and chorus students represent a situate in the Southeastern Senior District's Music Festival, which is a great honor for those students and the families, the Situate Fine Arts Program, and the Situate Fine Arts Program as a whole. Some of those students received scores high enough to audition for the All-State Music Festival, which is a higher-level event. And lastly, juniors are beginning post-high school future planning this week, and another SAT/ACT test is available through Revolution Prep in the near future. So the student body has a lot of opportunities. We're taking the most we can out of this year and this situation. We're happy to have what we do have. So I'm, I'm happy to report good things.
That's great. Celia, again, I, I say this every time you speak, but it just, you know, it's, it's great to hear that, that things are continuing on even in the midst of a pandemic. And I think maybe you have a future as a, as an anchor. I always put up, you know, a positive spin on everything. So it just, it gives us, you know, it just makes, you know, it just shows that things are actually moving forward, and the students are taking advantage of their opportunities. So we really appreciate it.
It is. Thank you. Yeah, we're so lucky and thankful to have everything, all the opportunities that we're taking advantage of this year. It's been great, actually.
Excellent. Nice to hear. And you, you reported for all three students today, correct?
Yes, I did. Yeah.
All right. All right. Thank you. Any, any comments by the rest of the committee? All right, seeing none. Thanks very much. And again, you're welcome to stay on, or you can, you can sign off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, I'd like to introduce. Sorry, can anyone hear me? Dr. McGuire? American Legion Post 144 Speech Contest.
Yes, and Mr. Swett is joining me to discuss this. I just want to say in advance, I want to thank our veterans who participated to bring this opportunity to our students. It is part of their mission to devote their time to mutual helpfulness for our veterans, but also for mentoring youth and program sponsorship. And this is a great example of one of those opportunities our students have had this fall to be able to participate in something despite the pandemic and that they're able to move forward in this competition. So, Mr. Swett?
Thank you very much, Dr. McGuire. It's nice to see everybody this evening. And thank you for the opportunity to talk about this important annual event. I'm going to give a brief overview of the program and then just say a little bit about each of the three winners. Since 2009, Situate Post 144 of the American Legion has supported this oratorical contest to develop deeper knowledge and appreciation for the U.S. Constitution among high school students. Students choose a part of the Constitution that interests them, do independent research on their topic, and then write and present an eight-to-10-minute speech from memory that focuses on the duties and obligations of citizens to our government. Their speeches are judged by members of the Legion and the History Department at the high school. And the top three speakers are awarded a scholarship to be used for college. This year, in addition, we, we had the help of the Situate Police Department to let us use their media room, presentation room, so that the Legion folks could, could join us virtually because they couldn't come to the school. This year, there are two students who tied for second place. Each of them won a $400 prize. The first student I'd like to recognize is sophomore Victor Baucher. Victor focused on the Second Amendment, and it's important when it was created and today. Victor told me that this is an important program because it motivates students to go above and beyond history class to understand the current value of the most important document in our nation's history. Thanks for your participation and your speech, and congratulations to Victor Baucher. The other second-place winner was Senior Grace Scott. Her speech addressed the importance of Parts of Articles 1, 2, and 3 in the Constitution, which fit together under the idea of separation of powers. Grace feels like she deepened her understanding of this democratic principle and really understands more about how the legislative, executive, and judicial branches are all based on citizens' participation. Grace also commented that she believes that a focus on the Constitution can help unite all Americans during this divisive time. Thank you, Grace, and congratulations to you. The first-place winner, who earned a $1,000 scholarship, is sophomore Molly Ryan. Molly presented her ideas about how the 19th Amendment, which guaranteed women the right to vote, was ratified through the effective use of the First Amendment. Through this competition, Molly said she gained respect for the men and women who fought for the rights that she has today. She also mentioned that she has a newfound passion for public speaking. Once again, thank you so much to Situate American Legion for their ongoing commitment to helping our students develop leadership, the ability to think and speak clearly, and an understanding of the rights, privileges of American citizenship. We appreciate their work and their ongoing commitment to our students.
Thanks very much, Mr. Swett. Again, congratulations to all three recipients. I don't know how you did that. I don't, I don't really know if I could speak eight to 10 minutes without any notes. In addition to taking on your, your regular duties and responsibilities of school, also taking on this additional chore, I guess, and showing that you have true talent and, and, and interest in the Constitution, especially at this time. I think it was a wonderful time to participate. So the three winners, congratulations again. If you can help us in anything that we're doing, we'll be more than willing to take your advice, especially in the public speaking realm. Molly Ryan, if, if that's what your forte and interest is, all the power to you, and I would be willing to listen to anything you have to offer. So thanks again. Again, it just, it gives me great, I don't know if it was the right word, I guess pride that our students are really finding a way to, to progress and enhance their educational experience in the midst of all that we're experiencing. So once again, congratulations to all recipients and to the sponsors who assisted them. Any other comments by the committee? All right. Thank you again. Moving on the agenda, we have COVID-19 Pool Testing and Binax Testing Initiative for K-12 schools. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Dutch, Director of Business and Finance, and Ms. Kelly Roach, Nurse Leader.
Bob, do you want to start? Do you want me to talk about specifics of testing?
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So I'm going to start first by talking about the Binax Now Rapid Point of Care Test that is a partnership between DUCY and DPH. And what this is, is a rapid COVID test for students and staff that are symptomatic. So this is not for people without symptoms. It's for those kids or staff that come to the nurse's office in any of our schools with symptoms during the day. We have accounts set up. We have the test kits. We've had all of our nurses trained so that we can use these. The next step is to get families registered and staff registered. And how that works is through a self-registration code that is unique to each school that we're firming up on Wednesday and should have those out by the end of the week to families if they would choose. It's totally optional if they choose to participate in the testing. So this is just going to be another tool in our toolbox when we have kids that come down during the day that we can identify sooner those positive cases. So it's very accurate. This was done side-by-side. At Lawrence General Hospital, a very high-throughput testing site, and they tested folks with this Binax Now test alongside the same time of the PCR. And they found it highly effective and highly accurate to identify people with symptoms in high-vibr loads and middle-vibr loads. So this is something that if a student or a staff member presented positive, we're assuming that they're positive. We can identify them quickly, right within 15 minutes. We can start contact tracing and help protect spread quicker. If students have COVID-19 symptoms and they are negative, they also get sent home, and they're advised to follow up with their provider for possible further PCR testing to validate those results. Again, this is, you know, we're super excited to do this, to be able to have this testing right away and have results quicker to help our community identify and stop the spread for the Abbott test. And again, we're going to ask people to continue to monitor the symptom checker that we sent home that identifies- that identifies symptoms that are COVID-19, like fever, like cough, like shortness of breath, headache, et cetera. Any of those symptoms are what's going to qualify that student or that staff member for the testing in the nurse's office. And the test will be done by nurses in the isolation room. We require to report to DUCY and to DPH any positives, just like we normally would. Contact tracing would start by us like it normally does because we're finding out, as you all know, that we sometimes know before the Board of Health because things get delayed sometimes. And I just feel like this is a super great opportunity for us to, to use as a tool in our toolbox.
Do you want me to talk a little bit about the pool testing?
Sure, you can. And I can talk about what it is afterwards if you'd like.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to focus on what I understand of it and then you can, you can correct me as we go through. Pool testing is a systematic way that's a little bit less expensive to test students who may be asymptomatic to minimize the risk of spread within schools. Specifically, what we've done in the, what we've done in the past with teachers is individualized tests. So the, the swab, the nasal swab is collected, put into a test tube and sent off for testing. In pool testing, what's happening is 10, 10 staff members or students would self-swab. They would put all 10 of those swabs into a single vial and that would be sent off. If it, if the liquid that those samples were in was negative, then we could assume all 10 of those folks were negative as well. If that liquid was positive, then one or more of the 10 potentially are positive for COVID. And each of them would be tested through the Binax system here, here at school. The, the point of it is that it's much more cost effective because you're doing 10 tests for the price of, a cost of one. Additionally, the state is paying for this for the first six weeks through March 28th, after which we would have to then pay for it ourselves or make a decision whether we're going to continue or not. So our, our early inclination is while it's free, we, we would like to participate and try to identify a process for how this would happen. And that's the next steps for us is to identify a process for identification of who's participating and how. Anything I left out, Kelly?
No, you covered it well.
Okay. I don't know if there are any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Dutch and Kelly. Open up to the committee. Any questions relative to the pool, pool testing?
I have a question.
Or Binax?
I have a question. Do we know, Dr. Dutch, what the cost to districts or any rough numbers on what cost to districts would be after the six-week trial run?
Yeah, the, the, the cost is basically one, one-tenth of what it was costing for a test, which was for us $45. So you're, you're looking at, at about $5 per 10 students or 10, 10 tests. So, pretty, pretty cost effective.
Any other questions, comments from the committee?
I have a question about the pool testing and the Binax. So if, in that pool of 10 students, it turns out one of them is positive, but the Binax only shows positive if kids are symptomatic.
They show highest, um, highest confidence rates of picking up the virus at higher levels, but they are still, I think, 70 to 80% at the lower levels. And so we would use, that's, that they're recommend, the state's recommendation to follow up is to test everybody that is in that pool that comes back positive with the Binax.
Okay. And just to, Matt, just a question about the process. If, so parent, it's optional for parents.
Yes.
Once they've registered, that's basically giving permission.
Yes.
And what would be the process if you, if a student came to the nurse and you were going to test them, would you call the parent first before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Parents will get a phone call first. We would talk about the symptoms. We would talk about any history or exposure like we normally would with any student that comes down. We'd ask them, you know, we would start first, see if they were registered on the website. And if they had, we'll ask them permission over the phone. Would you like us to swab your student? And then we'll go from there.
All right. That's great. And we use the Binax at work, so it's, it's a great machine. Very, very effective. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? I just have one, I guess. Is the district in position to utilize both of these tests as they become available?
Binax, we already have. We're just finalizing the codes that we had to wait for the company that manages the consent form, Project Beacon. We're doing that on Wednesday and we're hoping to get those out very soon thereafter. Each school will get a code unique to that school and people will self-register and we're, we have them and we're ready to go. All the nurses are trained. As far as the pool testing, we've applied. We've put the steps in motion. We've asked for what we, you know, we've, we've talked about what we've needed as a district and we're waiting to hear back to see if we're accepted. But we're in the process.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I just have one more question. Kelly, is it pre-K to 12 for both the Binax and the pool testing?
Yes. Yep. And it's a short swab.
All right. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. We're flying right to this agenda. Thank you to all so far. I'm going to go into old business, just to, just to give you an update on the agenda. I'm constantly trying to revise the agenda to make it most efficient and effective for everybody. In my mind, I always feel as if we need to resolve old business before we start new business. So that's why I'm putting it before new business. It's just my preference. Sorry to those that have to wait to, uh, to provide their new business. So with that being said, the first item under old business is the High School Program of Studies. Dr. McGuire. And Ms. Tammy Rundell.
I do just want to take a moment and say thank you to our American Legion Post Legionnaires from Post 144 who have joined us here tonight to thank our students. We neglected to do that earlier. Ms. Rundell and our department chairs are here tonight, so I know there were some individual questions. I did just want to say from a holistic standpoint, we do very much want to listen to the voice and the choice of our students with regards to scheduling our courses. And we, we, as part of our scheduling process, really want to meet their needs. Of course, I think one of the questions from Mr. Hayes' last meeting was, do you need another art teacher? And for me, I would say every department chair here tonight could argue the merits of having another teacher. But what we really need to do is be responsible with the staffing that we have and really look for ways to maximize the potential. So with movement, and I think Mr. Thomas will speak to this a little bit, with movement from our yearbook class, we have a wonderful class and a, a, a great opportunity for students that we'll still maintain through a club, but it all, it, it opens up another 40 to, you know, 45 seats for students to experience the R program. And that's a responsible move for us to use the teacher and the educator in a way that will bring more students into the R program and through the R program. And that's just one way I wanted to speak of. We look at what students are looking to take. We take that into consideration with our course registration process. And we also want to, you know, work smarter with the staff that we have and the numbers and the data that we get over, over years. So we want to be very aware of our, our constraints and, and be efficient in that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Rundell and the department chairs.
Yep. So, yep. So, Mr. Hayes, I know you had some questions last time about the yearbook and graphic design class that we are not running this year. So I just wanted, I have the department chairs here tonight to answer some of your questions. So I'm going to actually turn it over to Mr. Thomas to speak a little bit about your asking, but, you know, will there be an alternative for students to take a graphic design type class? So I'm going to just open it up to Mr. Thomas to speak to your, your questions about the R programs. Mr. Thomas? I think you're on mute.
Hold on. Jim, I'll get you there.
There we go. Yeah, I wasn't able to unmute. Thank you. I think Dr. Mar, McGuire did a good job initially explaining our situation with graphic design. And I'd like to just start by saying what a great job that Ms. Hendrickson does with that course. And we really want to preserve that for students. That being said, currently there are eight students participating in yearbook and it's a year-long course. And by opening up the day, those potential two sections, we could house 48 students. So in that game of 40 students would be gaining access to our curriculum, which is sizable. Some of the challenges that we saw with moving to the afternoon was engaging students and making sure that they're still part of the process. And while we're confident that that would take place because our kids are motivated to participate in, in the yearbook and graphic design, one idea that we're exploring right now is students that are currently in yearbook next year that are scheduled into a study hall could have the option to opt into an independent study where they work on yearbook during that time. It would look something like the Maker Space, which is right outside Ms. Hendrickson's class. You, you're probably looking in reality at one or two kids per block, if that, just depending upon their ability, availability. They would work parallel to what was going on in the classroom with Ms. Hendrickson. It would help with the lift because the yearbook does require a lot of work. And so it would help with that by having it assigned as an independent study. There'd be a little bit of leverage to make sure that students are completing the work that they need to. And then the balance of the work, of course, would be done at the after-school hours. So that's something that we're exploring and, and everyone seems really hopeful about that option.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And Mr. Hayes, you had a question also last time about exploring teaching classical thought, ethics, morals. So I'm hoping that Mr. Swett and Mr. Scott Paletti can speak to that, how they, how those, how those concepts are being taught right now in their curriculum. So, Mr. Swett, would you like to answer that, please? Just talk a little bit about that.
Yeah. I, I would say in, in source studies, we definitely talk about the, the rise of the Enlightenment and individual thought and how that plays out in important documents like the Declaration of Independence and, and rights and democracy and all that, that end of classical thought. We do a little bit of Rome in the ancient, ancient history class in sixth grade with Mr. Poirier and Mr. Fitzgerald. So I'd say the idea of individual rights and liberties and the, and for every human being is an important part of our curriculum. I'm not sure if that gets to the question that you had.
Well, I guess I was thinking more a little bit about, as, as literature, the Bible, Aristotle, Homine, the Iliad, Homer, the Iliad, those types of things.
I would turn that over to Mr. Scott Paletti.
Can you unmute him, Mr. Hayes? Oh, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Hayes. Quick answers to your questions. Aristotle's rhetorical appeals, logos, ethos, pathos are really the foundation for all written communication and really expressive communication in the high school. So that, that is absolutely a bedrock of what, what is happening up at the high school. As far as the Bible as a text, that's not something that's frequently used. As far as some of the other sources that you mentioned, we do have a senior selective that's running this year for mythology. And that's certainly where a lot of the, you know, some of the classic stories can come in as well as looking at some other cultures and their mythologies and some of the overlap there. So the strongest through line though is without a doubt expressive communication and how Aristotle's, again, his appeals to rhetoric are, are what we mainly focus on.
Okay. And just maybe a, a brief, John, how you, how you do, you discuss or, or study Aristotle's thoughts?
Right. So very briefly, logos is an appeal to logic, ethos is an appeal to credibility or ethics or the morality of something, and pathos is an appeal to emotion. And when we are working, especially with the writing standards, but sometimes with the speaking and listening standards, that's the idea is to, is that students understand that these are three ways. If you're trying to write a persuasive essay or some type of persuasive argument, it's important to recognize that this, there's a long tradition of falling back on logic, ethics, emotions, and that in certain circumstances, you will focus on one. Sometimes you do two, sometimes you do all three. But really just to make sure that there is that, um, that connection, right? That we're not just kind of coming up with how we present arguments out of thin air, that there's a, a long tradition that we're connecting to for that.
Right. No, I appreciate that. It, it just, it interests me because in my high school days, I, I was not a high school superstar, but we, we read as literature and studied Aristotle, the Bible, Homer and the Iliad. And one thing that I left high school with was I could write. And it, it, it served me my whole life that, you know, I can, I can write pretty well. So I was just curious. So, but thank you. But.
All right.
Did the committee have any other questions about the program of studies that we could answer for you tonight?
Any other questions or comments? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Cituit High School School of Program of Studies.
So.
Motion by Mr. Hayes. There are second?
Second?
Second by Mr. Long. Roll call vote. We'll go with Ms. Limblon.
Yes.
Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
And Mr. Long?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes unanimously, unanimously. Thank you for your work.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Next item up on the under old business are the HVAC updates. Dr. Bob Dutch.
So I've shared my screen. I think I'm unmuted there.
Yep. We can see and hear it. We can see it and hear you.
Okay. Let me just get the. Okay. So we've been waiting for this patiently from, or not so patiently from the contractor who came in, finished their site visit at our six schools in October of 2020. They've provided us bits and pieces of the report over time. And we've been picking away at some of the things that they've identified as shortfalls so that they'd be completed by the time this report was done. Their summary is based on a comparison to the ASHRAE standards, which is the, the organization of air conditioning, heating, ventilation contractors. I'm going to share the summary of each school's report as well as a progress update and then a conclusion overall as far as where we are and where we still need to go. So this was a sampling of 20% of each classroom in each school. They measured the supply and exhaust airflow rates, the condition of all of the HVAC equipment, the outside air, which you'll see as an acronym OA in the reports, the damper position, whether open, closed, its operation, and the condition of filters. So that's what they did in each of the schools. At Cituit High School, the majority of equipment were deemed to be in an overall good condition. The HVAC units control was functioning well and controlling the outside dampers. What we've done since they've. What we've done since they have done their report is we've added pleated MERV thirteen air filters, which is the has the greatest density and allows the least amount of particles to pass through. It is the recommended filter for COVID. The unit ventilators in classrooms two twenty-seven and two sixty-five had new damper actuators installed because they were not functioning. The fans and the outside air dampers in the main gym are now operating. And then we are finalizing the purchase of a negative air equipment for the nurses section and the restrooms. The nurses' area does not have ventilation, so we have, we're in the process of installing a negative air equipment. We but we need to go up through the ceiling, and the ceilings in the high school are concrete, so we need to make sure we know where we're going and where we're coming out on the floor above. Gates Middle School, again, same information as in general, as you saw for the high school. The majority of equipment at Gates were deemed to be in overall good condition. All units had high-efficiency MERV thirteen filters in them already. All unit controls were functioning well and controlling outside air dampers properly. And all the classrooms show the capability for an acceptable amount of outside air being supplied to the room with good exhaust levels. Again, the nurses' room has no outside air supply, although it does have good exhaust flow. And again, we're in the process of providing that outside air supply and ventilation for that space. We've installed a negative air machine for the nurses' section, so now she they have that flow. Ultraviolet lights have been installed, not are being, have been installed in some of the rooftop units. And the control updates are underway at at the building as well. That's the the system that allows us to control it, control everything remotely. Cushing School, again, same measurements were done there. The majority of the unit ventilators were deemed to be in an overall acceptable condition. The HVAC unit control was functioning well and controlling the outside air dampers properly. Most of the tested classrooms with univell ventilators showed a good amount of outside air being supplied to the room. Seventy-five percent of the tested classroom exhausts were underperforming, considering post-COVID occupancy at a range of seventy to seventy-five percent flow rate. So when they were here, that's what they identified. Nurse room also has no outside air supply. Keep in mind, these are at the time they came in in October. Since then, we've purchased pleated MERV thirteen air filters for all of the unit ventilators. The unit ventilators in the classrooms thirteen nineteen and the principal's office were repaired. The ductwork in the main hall, the cafeteria, and the gymnasium were cleaned, and we replaced the MERV ten filter, MERV ten filters with the MERV thirteen filters. All exhaust fan belts and motors were checked and repaired, and the ducts were cleaned. And the nurse and isolation rooms now have HEPA negative air machine equipment installed. So we've addressed the issues that they they identify. The Hathley School, same same standard. The majority of unit ventilators were deemed to be operating in an overall underperforming condition. They're recommending that we make required adjustments, the pneumatic controls, and they would like us to that should say internal duct cleaning, not dust. That should be duct cleaning. And the HVAC unit controls were functioning well and were controlling the outside dampers properly so that we're getting the appropriate outside air. All of the tested classrooms with unit ventilators show below minimum required outside air being supplied and low exhaust levels. Again, the nurse's office and the lobby have no outside air supply and a low amount of exhaust. So what have we done since then? We've purchased pleated MERV thirteen air filters to upgrade the level of filtration for the equipment. All of the pneumatics have been reprogrammed to allow a minimum of a hundred percent supply outside air. Folks at Hathley are probably feeling either the heat is running constantly or their rooms are cold because they're getting a hundred percent outside air in as if every window is open, basically. The main hall and the cafeteria, gymnasium, and the library all had their ductwork cleaned, and the MERV ten filters were replaced with MERV thirteen filters. Negative air machine was installed in the nurse nurses' area and the isolation room. And we're looking at a solution to provide negative air machines to all classrooms as a temporary measure until we're able to get all of the unit ventilators working the way that they should. The cost for each negative air machine is about sixty thousand dollars, so to do that in every classroom, we're looking at over half a million dollars. There are alternatives that we're looking at that are less expensive and equally as good and have been approved by RISE as a solution. And Bob Dillon will be able to provide you a little more detail on that, and I believe he's on with me as well. The Jenkins School, same same standard of measurements. Again, the majority of unit ventilators were operating in an overall acceptable condition. HVAC unit controls were not functioning as intended and therefore weren't controlling the outside air properly. Most of the tested classrooms with unit ventilators show thus an acceptable amount of outside air because of the damper position. There was good exhaust level in each classroom. Continuing the summary, most of the test rooms, tested classrooms showed less than acceptable amounts of outside air. Repeat, I apologize. And then the nurses' room has no outside air supply, although it does have a good exhaust flow. So progress thus far. The school's purchased pleaded MERV thirteen filters. The unit ventilators and other HVAC units have undergone control upgrade to address the damper control. So now the outside air is appropriate, and the controls were inspected on the energy management system to show that the outside air dampers are being controlled. They weren't before. Moving to the Wampatuck School, the unit ventilators were deemed operating in overall good condition. The unit controllers were functioning as intended and controlling the outside air dampers. And all the classrooms showed acceptable amounts of outside air being supplied with good room and exhaust level. Cafeteria and art room with heating and ventilating units showed acceptable amount of outside air supplied to the room with good exhaust levels. All the classrooms with unit ventilators showed an acceptable amount of outside air with good exhaust. And again, the nurses' room has no outside air supply, although it did have good exhaust flow. What have we done at Wampatuck? We've purchased the pleaded MERV thirteen air filters. The facilities have switched all UV fans, unit ventilator fans to high so that we're ensuring that we have appropriate outside air. And then additionally, exhaust ducts were cleaned and the dampers were checked to be open and obstructions cleared. So conclusions. All of the tested schools HVAC equipment were deemed to be in overall acceptable condition, with the exception of Jenkins and Hathley. Specifically, the Hathley school unit ventilators do not meet the code required as far as supplying outdoor air because of the poor supply fan and controls operation. Keep in mind, this is COVID COVID standards, not in a traditional, normal, year-to-year setting. The classrooms featured low levels of exhaust air. At Jenkins, the elementary school unit ventilators and air handling units were not operating properly during the visit. And finally, the remaining school, four schools, had some existing issues with their HVAC equipment, mainly the classroom exhaust fans and nurse and isolation areas. These issues have been addressed by fixing the exhaust fans, cleaning the ducts, and installation of HEPA filter and negative air machines in the nurse areas. The recommendations from RISE Engineering is that the school should continue to work on implementing all recommendations in the reports to improve operation of the systems, improve the indoor air quality, and meet the code for post-COVID occupancy levels. We will post the summary report on the Citroen Public Schools website. There is also a specific report for each school that goes into greater detail. What I've provided for you this evening is a summary of all of all of the information, highlighting those items that were an issue so that you'd be aware of what those challenges were and what we've done to address those challenges. So I will stop sharing my screen and then answer any questions.
Great, thanks, Dr. Dutch. I'm going to open up to the committee for any questions or comments for Dr. Dutch. Got to be some. Come on.
I have a ton.
All right.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike. I was just being polite, waiting for somebody else to go first. Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Long.
Uh, Dr. Dutch, first off, thank you for putting this together. I think it's helpful for us to to see and share with the community. Hopefully, it uncovered all of Nicole's questions. When you say that we we looked at twenty percent of the classrooms, do we have a plan to look at additional classrooms based on the findings that we had?
We don't have a plan to do that presently this year. This is a fairly lengthy process, as you can see. It 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 took till mid-January to to get this completed, something they started in October. It's also quite expensive to do more than once a year. My recommendation would be that we would do it again next year, after we've had an opportunity to address some of the things they've identified. We we've gone through, similar to what they did, confirming that unit ventilators in other spaces were working or not working. Once we identified what some of the issues were and where we we fixed pneumatics, for example, at the Hathley School, that was done and addressed any spaces because it was done for the whole building. The same is true for filters. If we identified an issue in in some percentage of the twenty percent of classrooms, we assumed it probably exists in the others, and we we made corrections to address it everywhere, not just in those spaces unless they were very specific.
Okay, and that was actually my follow-up question, so thank you for answering that part.
Sure.
And then I guess I have another question, since you answered some of them at once. Based on the the ranking that we got for each school initially, do we know what our new ranking would be based on? Do they say if you do X, Y, and Z, you would go from unacceptable to good or good to great, whatever the case may be?
They they didn't really rank, they ranked them that way. They really focus on acceptable and unacceptable. There there aren't ranges of of, you know, how acceptable something is. It's the minimum threshold. And it's based on on, you know, the ASHRAE standards, which are are up, or they're looking at optimal airflow filtration and function of of the systems. I I will say that the the two things that I've heard most common and heard from RISE Engineering as well, as well as CBS, who's been the the contractor who's been fixing many of the problems, they've all indicated, well, RISE has indicated that part of their challenge was we we kept fixing things that they've identified, so they kept having to modify the report, which is not what's happened in most places where they've gone. So that's a positive. The other is the contractor has said, you know, they've they've been in our buildings for a long time. They've been the vendor who's been fixing when things break. And they've indicated that the systems are in in better working condition than they have been in all the time that they've been, they've been working on these buildings. So I think we're in a, we're in a pretty good place and certainly a better place than we were in August when we first started looking at our systems. But I I think the challenge and a challenge that we're we're we've identified and we have a plan for is making, is not trying to do all of this at once, but to to come up with a plan where we're replacing filters periodically. We are monitoring, you know, this this the status of our systems through the electronic management and the remote management system that exists so that we can see when there's a problem. And then the regular cleaning of the ductwork, I think, is going to make a huge difference. They've gone into the schools after hours, and you can hear the air whooshing through the exhaust systems, which, from what I'm told, was was never the case before. That those are, those are all things that we need to continue to do on an ongoing basis so that we don't backslide.
And it looks like it gives us some good ideas where if we go back and, you know, build a new school at some point in the near future, the nurses' room needs outside air or, you know, certain things we know to definitely look forward, look at going forward to make sure that we have an optimal space for the for our staff and students.
Correct, and I'm not sure why those spaces didn't have exhaust systems set up. I don't know if they were afterthought, so I'm not, I'm not familiar with the, you know, the design of the buildings well enough to to know that.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
You're welcome.
Ms. Brandalini?
Yeah, those were definitely big parts of my question, so thanks, Mike and Dr. Dutch. So I guess just what I wrote down really is, so there isn't really, is there a great rating or like, because I was just trying to conceptualize the scale, and I know you just touched on this, but so it's like good versus acceptable versus underperforming. Guess I'm just trying to get a scale picture of this. So is there great performing? It would assume that Gates should be great performing if that's available, but maybe that's just not how their scales go.
Yeah, they don't, if you look at the the individual school reports, it'll be evident that, you know, Gates is in a much better place than any of the other schools, even the high school, which is, you know, not as old as some of our, some of our building, our elementary buildings. So there is, you know, really, they're just, they're looking at minimum standards that that they're, that their expectations are according to their to the recommendations from the the agency.
Okay. And so obviously, we've been able to do a lot of this because of the COVID money, but I guess I just want to dig into fiscally, you know, these previous levels of functioning. Were they because of, in your opinion, or from what you've been looking into? Was the function levels not great because the buildings are old, or is it the combination of that and just a lack of maintenance and not proper maintenance program? Because obviously, we don't want that to happen to gates and, you know, as a new building, and then looking ahead to future building projects, we wouldn't want to do that then with those new buildings. So I guess that's that's where I'm I'm headed. It's like, what what do we, is this something that we're able to currently maintain with our budget? And how do we? how do we kind of add the same because we won't always have the COVID money that was used for these projects?
I I think, you know, that we started a conversation with the town to look at how we're how we're funding our maintenance plan. So what what we've done is I've asked Bob Dylan to work with Kevin Kelly to put together a maintenance plan. Now that we have, there are certain things that we've done every year, elevator inspections, you know, roof roof tie off inspections, things that that are safety related. Things that are required by the state to be done. I guess ultimately, and situ is not unique in this, this is true in most places. If if the pool of resources is finite and you have an option of providing staff and materials for students or maintaining facilities. Your your dollars tend to go directly towards the students to provide benefit for for them. So I think what we need to try need to do is is develop that plan. Put some dollars to that, you know, see what the cost is on an annualized basis. And then work backwards from there to see how we can do that. Whether that, you know, requires some additional appropriation or, you know, figuring out other ways to to fund those those maintenance activities. Ultimately, I mean, I I think everybody would agree that, you know, you do it with your own home as well. It's certainly less expensive to maintain than it is to to rebuild. So ultimately, that that's our goal. And you'll see it in this budget that we will identify specific activities within with within maintenance. And then and look at how we can create those opportunities to to maintain these systems as they exist. Right? I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you so much. I think that was all I had written down, just. Did you say that we had purchased those 60, any of those $60,000 negative air machines already?
We did. The the ones that are in the nurses' offices are the high end negative air machine.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's funny. You mentioned it too that why I have written down, why are the schools not providing the nurses with any ventilation? It's like a common thing, not like situated, I mean, back when the buildings were built in the 60s, the nurses got like a horrible set of spaces, you know, with no windows with patients to put in. It's just so not logical, but so be it. All right. And then I did say I had written down like Mike's question too, that is the 20% a good sample size, you think for, I mean, obviously, that's what the company uses, but 20% is a good sample size for doing these tests. It seems like a little low of a number, but again, I don't know anything about these types of things.
It's their standard. Recognizing that if we identify an issue in that 20% in 100% of the that 20%, we we know that exists everywhere in the building and we need to address it in all spaces. If if only, you know, 5% of that 20% that we've identified, you know, that we've tested is identified with a specific problem, it's probably a one off in that situation and not something that is systematic through through all units. So it it I think from their perspective, it's a process that has informed reasonably well as it relates to the to the systems.
Thanks, Dr. Dutch. That's all those were my questions, but I just agree. I think we need to really focus on that maintenance plan for as we go forward. Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments, Janice, Mike?
I have a couple.
Okay, Mr. Hayes.
And Bob, thank you for the report. Correct me if I'm wrong, though. I mean, this report was a basically a review after the initial inspection in the summer fall and work that we had done. So and this came later, is that right?
That's correct. This was basically an audit of the more comprehensive measurement of air quality in the in in all of the spaces. Back in in September or in August, we I think it was August, we had every space tested for air quality and, you know, then looked and had somebody else looking at all of our systems for their function. This was an audit of that report.
Okay. And my other question is when we see our initial budget in February and these issues are become part of 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 our spending for next year. Do we, am I right or wrong in assuming that the town will that will be also reflected in the town's budget? Do we know?
Um, it would not be reflected in the town's budget. Maintenance of the buildings and the systems within those buildings fall within the school department. Anything outside of the buildings campus related is the responsibility of the town. So these systems will be our responsibility moving forward at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, great, thanks. Um, Dr. Dutch, thanks again. I know I know that you've given us this number probably two or three times before, if not more. Can you just give us if you off top of your head roughly how much we've spent with all this maintenance and and testing that came afterwards?
Roughly $600,000.
Okay. I think that's important and we're expecting to get that reimbursed, expecting to.
We are. It it may be a little bit more than that that we've spent. And we may not get it all reimbursed because we've reached our threshold with the CARES Act funds. So we we may have spent more than we're entitled to to get reimbursed.
Yeah. So I just, I just, I mean, I think that this is great work. And again, I would I would agree with Mr. Long and Ms. Brinley. The 20% sampling seems a little bit weak, but I think that that I'm assuming that's some sort of either industry standard or it was just appropriate for all of our buildings from a from a monetary perspective as well as from a time perspective. Obviously, I'm glad that we did at least the testing on the 20%. I think that that's great. I I I said this a couple of times before, I think without the pandemic, none of this would have happened. I don't think any of this maybe some minor maintenance would have happened, like replacing some of the filters, but I don't think we would have made any huge spending close to 600,000. So again, it's a poor excuse, but at least the the bones of the buildings have been improved.
Agreed. The systems have been upgraded to near near where they were when, you know, the the facilities first opened. You know, which is a positive thing.
And and have you received any, I'd say anecdotal feedback from any staff that they can tell a difference in the quality of the air or anything to that degree?
Not not so much the quality of the air, but just the the fact that they're that the the units are running. That there's air coming through them that that they didn't always sense before. I think the one of the biggest differences, as I mentioned, is the exhaust is the return, you know, you're 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 hearing and feeling the the air air exchange that's happening in a much more active way than you were before. It was it was more passive because it wasn't happening in the volume that it's happening now as far as the airflow. And that's that's the feedback that I've gotten mostly secondhand, but you know, it's definitely feedback that I've gotten.
Pete, one more comment, please.
Sure, go ahead.
And this is all good. One thing I just want to make sure people understand is that this past summer isn't the first time we have looked at these issues. I mean, I think if you go back in the budget over the last previous eight years, starting with Superintendent McCarthy. He made a specific effort and translated into budgetary lines to in improve and 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 work on on our ventilation systems in all our schools. So this is not something that just occurred to us. And I just want to make sure you know, the people watching understand that.
Yeah, I just to follow up on that, I I fully understand that. And I I think as I said to Mrs. Brandalini, when, you know, when you prioritize your expenditures, you're going to prioritize spending on those things that have the greatest impact on student learning and student outcomes. And generally, maintenance of the building doesn't fall into that category, not that it's not important. And not that the learning environment isn't important. But it's not as important as the teacher that's in front of the student and the the materials that they have to learn with. Right. So maintenance always seems to take a backseat for that reason. But I think if we can try and carve out small bits to to address this in little way and and increase what's in the maintenance budget. The maintenance line item without negatively impacting instruction, and that's ultimately the goal.
Okay, great, thank you. And just to add on, add on to a little bit what Dr. Dutch said. Ms. Brinley and I have had our initial meeting with the town to talk about this and, you know, we're we're trying to figure out how we can best satisfy the maintenance needs of the school with as little impact as possible to outcomes of student success. So Dr. Dutch mentioned, I just want to say that we have had initial discussions and that that's all it's been so far. But it, you know, something that we're working towards and trying to come up with a way that we can continue to spend what needs to be sent spent in order to maintain our buildings the way they should be. So we'll hopefully have more to more to report in a couple of weeks after we have the follow up discussions.
Mr. Gates, can I just add one thing before I finish? There's been countless hours spent with RISE Engineering going through the buildings and then working with the vendors and and that was done by Bob Dylan, our Assistant Facilities Manager and Kevin Kelly, the Facilities Manager for the town. So I just want to shout out to them and thank them for all the time they put in, including a Friday night and Saturday mornings meeting with RISE when there was nobody in the building so that we could get up and into the duct work without impacting what was happening in the classroom. So thank you to those two gentlemen.
That's great, thanks. Mr. Dylan, did you want to say anything? I can unmute you if you want. No, all right. Thanks again. I think all the work that you do does go unnoticed because we don't see you because you're up in the air ducts and things, so. All right, if no other questions or comments, we will. Thanks again, Dr. Dutch, for that. I know that was a lot of work, a lot of hard effort. Again, I appreciate it. So we're going to move on to next item on the agenda, which is our leadership report, Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you, Chairman Gates, and it's too bad. Bob Dylan didn't want to get unmuted because I was going to have him do my report tonight. But I I look forward to these meetings each week. Just to hear all the great things happening in the district. Things we're working on and things we're working on improving. And the people behind the scenes, I think you put it well tonight, Chairman Gates, on, you know, we were in the middle of a pandemic, but but things are happening, schools moving forward. And there's a lot of good things still happening. So I I just wanted to thank everybody, everybody for that. I think Celia's report about what's happening in the high school was excellent. The Gates presentation on language based programs, I also thought was impressive. And I I want to congratulate our winners of the American Legion Speech Contest. And also to thank our veterans for their involvement and then taking the time to come tonight. I thought that was awesome. So thank you very much. I also want to thank Kelly Roach and our nurses. We've been on the cutting edge of testing. We were one of the few school districts that offered testing for our staff free of charge. We're also one of the few districts that has gone forward and and moved and done the work to get the binex testing. And then we're also in line for the school testing. So we're really working hard on, you know, our first pillar of of safe and strong opening of our schools there. And I have to agree with, you know, Dr. Dutch. He's the king of presentations. I know he's got a following and I'm I'm a groupie. I I will give a little constructive criticism tonight, though, on the background of when he showed the slides of the all the repairs that were done, he still had the smoke stack with all the smoke coming out. It looked a little bit like Chernobyl, so maybe if we had a clean air version of that in the next one, I would, I think that would be a little better. So we'll fix that. But I have to concur with him to thank RISE Engineering, but you know, Bob Dylan and Kevin Kelly, they're just they work so well together. The town has been unbelievable to work with, really, really positive partnership and those two guys with their with their team of custodians and the RISE group have just done months worth of work behind the scenes, just making our school safe. So I want to thank them all. And then for upcoming reports after me tonight, the closers would be Dr. Boebert will update us on special education and Assistant Superintendent Arnold will talk about social emotional learning in our update on our DEI job description. So there's a lot happening, a lot on the agenda tonight and a lot going on in our schools. Next, I want to do something that's traditional to keep positive energy and enthusiasm, as we know, it's contagious and it's free. But so is negativity. So at a lot of our meetings, we'll start out with what we call sailor shout outs. Which are basically compliments to other people. They don't have to be in the meeting. They could be anybody, students, staff, community members. That have impressed us and it's a great way to start a meeting. So I I'd like to start this meeting in my report with a sailor shout out to our local PTO leaders. I had the privilege of meeting with them last week. And we spent about 90 minutes together and I heard what each of the schools and the PTOs are doing for our teachers and for our students. And it's just an amazing things going on and how creative they had to be and thinking outside the box on fundraising. It's a big part of what they do. And then even the opportunities they provide for our staff and students. We're very creative and heartfelt. And so I just really want to thank them. We had a good question and answer after. So it was really nice to meet the PTO leaders. So I want to thank them and thank all our parents that volunteer in the PTO programs to help our our schools get better and be great places of positivity. The next I wanted to touch on briefly is our, you know, health and wellness update. I just want to give people, you know, from the horse's mouth, a perspective on, you know, reopening and closing schools and and, you know, it's I'm going to summarize what I wrote to everybody, but, you know, I just want to make sure people understand that. You know, our highest priority is is to keep kids in school, to keep our clubs going, to keep our sports going. You know, moving to remote is a last resort. It's torture. I hate it. Nobody likes it. So I want everybody to know and it's not taking lightly these decisions. I think we've been very consistent in all of our methodology and coming up with decisions on remote learning, hybrid learning. And so basically, what happens is we're on, we we speak daily with the with the board, the local Board of Health. Drew Shaley and Eileen over there, we talk regularly with them. We talk regularly with the Department of Education. With the Mass DPH, I know Kelly Roach, who did a nice job presenting tonight also has a lot of has earned a lot of credibility with the epidemiologists for the state and they get right back to her. They see her number. So we've got a hotline to them. We get a lot of advice from them. I want to thank both our local doctors who are well respected in town and have awesome credentials and are well respected in the profession. And Dr. Lane is our school physician and Dr. McBride is a local pediatrician who just, you know, volunteers for these committees and and is on call anytime we need to ask advice or questions. So and then we have our our local medical advisory, which a lot of those folks are on along with our leadership team to have the school, town, state information balance and the medical balance. Along with including our district leadership team of principals and you know, assistant principals and school building and district leadership, all those groups look over this data, share conversations. And the priorities are safety first of all the individuals in our buildings, highest priority. And and then we talk next about, you know, high quality student learning, whether we're in the buildings or not. So those are always on the forefront. So I wanted people to know that that's the process we use on a regular basis. We do have a four metric system that I shared. And I want everyone to know that, you know, we can do a better job at revising that as the guidelines and guidance and science changes. Our metrics are excellent and they've served us well. But we're working on updating them and making them more user friendly so we can share them with the community. Put them on our website so people, you know, don't have to ask or have regular access to them to really know how we're making our decisions. And, you know, we've said this from the beginning that we pride ourselves on the transparency and sharing this information. So we're looking at upgrading that in as things change, providing the the metric and some of the, you know, even though there's four four components of that metric, some have higher priority than others in making the decisions. But again, they've served us well and we've kept everybody safe. So that's that. Next thing I want to update folks on is the diversity, equity and inclusion update. Our leadership team consisting of our central office staff, school leadership, which is principals, assistant principals, our athletic director, med co-director and department chairs and coordinators all completed collectively 12 hours over four sessions of diversity, equity and inclusion training from Dr. Cleese Warner, who is a renowned trainer. We were fortunate to get her. Her schedule is pretty booked up. I had worked with her in the past and respected the work she does. And, you know, I personally learned a lot. And I think it models for everybody that we have a lot to learn. And so we thought we'd go first and kind of a model where we can train the trainers and reach out and start working with our teachers next. And we're currently also working on, along with Dr. Warner, to get our teachers some training as well. We've already started that. But that one, that needs to continue. So I'm proud of the work that's going on there. And from that training, we've developed a, what we're calling a lean and mean DEI team. And what we mean by that is we don't want too many cooks in the kitchen when you're making decisions and collecting information. So we asked for volunteers of all those folks that I mentioned that have been trained to be on a small committee that can work on a number of things. For example, one would be, we have a school committee anti racism resolution. We have school committee goals that are directly correlated with DEI. I have superintendent and district goals that are DEI related. Every principal and teacher has some form of DEI in their, in their goals. And the importance to developing any strong cohesive plan K through 12 and then on up through the school committee and superintendent is to have conversations and cohesion among the elementary buildings and then between the scope of K through 12. So that group's going to kind of look at, you know, everything that's happening in our buildings and kind of bring that all together so that we're able to port out, report out to you in our mid year goals and my mid year goals to you coming up, all these specific things that we're doing. And I think the community deserves to hear that and know that we, the last five months, I think we've been, we've been getting a lot done. And I'd be proud to share that. So the lean and mean team will kind of look at that, collate some of that stuff, make sure we're consistent and that we're on the right track in achieving our goals. That team may also act as a a response team. I think as most people know, we've had some incidents this year, racial incidents. And that team can be called upon to help us address those situations. I want to make it clear that, you know, we are still hiring a DEI director. And Jen will shed some light on that tonight. But I also want everyone to know that that's not the panacea for resolving our issues with race to improving how we how we handle it in our schools and how do we promote, you know, love in our schools in respect. I think we're already all doing that. So again, I'll be glad to share that out, look forward to that. The DEI director certainly is going to be a big piece of that and bring it to the next level. But I do want everyone to know that that is not the only person that's doing this work. We all are doing this work. And then a few other things in this area of work for this year. We're looking at a school district policy. Want to thank Sam Lesniak and Ryan Gates were working on one of their goals as looking at their handbook. And I know Dr. Maguire was with Bill Luette and Karen Hughes. And what they figured out is that most handbooks, really, most school districts that had these had a district policy and which was an umbrella policy that everyone followed, which was makes sense. So what we're doing now is we're getting that all together so that we can work with the school committee Subcommittee on Policy to present that to the full school committee for a review and vote. So that's coming soon. And I know some folks have shared with us and I want to thank those community members out there that have shared with us information, resources, also the governor's mandate that came out with a lot of good points on anti racism and diversity. We're taking that into, you know, into account and using that as part of our work as well. So with the lean and mean DEI team, the DEI director and all of us doing the work, I think we're making great progress. And again, that will be shared in detail in the coming weeks. So that district policy again, and including that district policy, it talks about responses to incidents of bias and harassment. Also reporting, it gets into all the details of things we're reacting to right now. And I will agree that we are reacting to them. We're working on this policy. I wanted people to know, you know, I got a lot of emails that people weren't satisfied and some of the things we're doing. But I wanted to put your mind at ease that we have been working for five months on this stuff. We're close to finishing in different areas. So that policy piece is important to us. We want to get it right, but we are working on it. And then next, the high school has done a lot of work in this area. And they're in fact, moving out forward, I think you'll have it as really tomorrow, finishing up an incident response process for discrimination, harassment and retaliation. So that our students and staff know exactly how to safely share information and to allow us to help and support each other. So I think that's a step we were missing that we want to be real specific on and we can get better on. And I think the high school team has done a really good job at that. And so that will be rolled out tomorrow. I don't know. That's all I had. I don't, Dr. Maguire, do you have anything to add to that last piece?
Yeah, thank you. I would just say, and experiencing a number of these issues over the year and these incidents, one of the common threads that we have is that we want to be very aware of our students and their need to and their right to speak out against racism and harassment and and hate and do that in a productive way. But also, how do we appropriately report these incidents in a way that we can do what we need to do as a, as a school? Which is to, to teach and to help students to grow. People make mistakes and we move forward from them. And we want to be able to have a healthy supportive environment for all of our students. And the, the way to report, whether it's to a trusted adult or through a new reporting form, will give all of our students and staff the avenue to do what they're most comfortable with. But to, to bring that information to us first, because we can't handle it, we can't address it if we don't know about it. And what we want to get away from is really airing things out as public grievances in social media where they're more harmful to our marginalized populations. They're hurting our students, they're causing divisiveness in our community and that we can really work with the offenders, worked with the victims, work with their families and involve our disciplinary code of conduct and also our restorative practices and get to the heart of what we need to do as a school. And we can't do that if students don't report to us. So we really want to try to change the face of how incidents are reported and build that trust with the community of that continuous response and that incidence that we do care very much about them. And we do care about our students being able to have their voice and using it appropriately.
Thank you, Dr. Maguire. And I just want to end my report with the the safe and strong piece of our two pillars, the DEI piece and now the safe and strong, just to reiterate that, you know, with the, with the potential, you know, vaccine coming. And we should be getting, according to the Department of Education, today I got a memo that states they'll be giving us more detailed information on that. The only information we had right now is that teachers are in step two, phase two, which is looking like mid February. I don't know if that'll be moved up or not. We have lobbied the governor to do that as superintendent. So I'm hoping that's the case, but we are told that we'll have more information later in the week. So we'll be able to report that out as we get it. And also that we need to start having the conversations about what the return to school looks like. And, you know, we do have a safe and strong plan. There's a reopening continuum, continuum of learning. So we have the plan already in place. So I don't want people to get nervous that, you know, that it's going to take this long period of time to put something in place or have a plan in place. But we want to do it like we've done everything else. We want to do it safely. We want to do it. We want to go slow to go fast. And what that means, it doesn't mean blow things off. It means to be very prepared. And we're having a, a safe and strong meeting on February 11th. And some people were concerned about, you know, that being a little late. Just want to share some of the reasons for that. And I, you know, one example was the RISE report tonight that we needed to get that done and report and have that documentation ready to report out to our committee, our Safe and Strong Task Force to see, make sure that our schools are, are safe to bring more kids back. The science behind moving from six feet to three feet. Now, that's a reality that we have to look at if we're going to bring kids back. So these conversations, the, the model is there. We have the schedules, but the conversations have to go around, you know, when is it right to do that? So I want to have people to be patient. Again, we're not rushing into anything. We're going to do it right. And we're very prepared. These conversations have been going on with leadership. And we look to include the greater advisory of the task force in a couple of weeks. So there won't be a lot of turnover if needed, if the metric starts going the right direction. Right now, it's not there. I'll be quite honest. But those conversations need to start and we start having the hope that we will return. And I've been saying this, we will return. The question is, when? Is only when in that when it's safe. So those two things have to be criteria to be done. And I think we're, again, we're prepared for that as a leadership team. And we're ready to bring our community and have those conversations in a couple of weeks. And when we're ready, we'll be able to pull the plug on that pretty quickly. But again, it's going to take some dialogue and conversation similar to how we rolled out our first safe and strong plan. And then ultimately a move to, a full move to any kind of color coded system will involve a school can vote. So I wanted to end on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thanks, Superintendent Burkhead. Lot of information there. I'm going to open up to the committee for any questions or comments they may have.
I'm all set.
Anyone?
I'll just comment that that's, that is a lot of information. I, I'm wondering, maybe a question about when, hopefully we won't have to make it, you know, you won't have to make another decision to go fully remote. But maybe if that, if a decision like that is made, you know, you mentioned having more information and the metrics used, maybe more like really specific information, not that you have to give out, you know, notes from the medical advisory committee. But if people, you know, I think more information is better. I mean, we, you've been great with all, you know, communicating to the community. But, you know, specific to closing, you know, shutting down, you know, going remote, the more information I think people will appreciate. Yeah.
I agree. I agree. Thank you. And that's what, that's what we're working on in the new model, trying to make it more user friendly and that we can just plug numbers in and share it out and everybody knows upfront what it is. So that's our growth in that area. So thank you for the feedback.
Yeah. And I think people need to understand too, that even when teachers, you know, the, right now, it's what, middle, the middle of February, you said? That'll take time too, because it's in two doses, the vaccine. That's another like six weeks. So that in and of itself will be something to overcome too.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other members, comments, questions?
Well, I'd like to ask Bill a question if I may.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
Bill, when you were talking about the metrics and their varying degree of, of importance or reliance on them in different degrees. When we started back in the fall, the positivity rate in town was the, the important number was 3%. And we went up to nine point, I think, six, six, and we're down another point and a half since then. So, you know, we're still close to three times that 3% number. So I was just wondering if you could explain so everyone, you know, especially the townspeople understands the weighted importance that the, the, the four different metrics have.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the, you know, as we, as we live this year and we've kind of, you know, started to live the metric. You're right, the state average we talked about at the beginning when we started the metric was 5%. We wanted to be more conservative and we said 3%. And then what we've started to find out is that, okay, when you look at that state number or the town number, excuse me, the percentage, it was important to dig a little deeper and look at school numbers. So for example, we could have 5%, but all of those people might be in a nursing home or in four different families that had, don't have kids or aren't any staff members in our school. So why would we shut down schools if it really didn't have any connection to school? So I think the other metric that we have is school cases. And so that one held a little more, has begun to hold a little more weight. Because what we found is that there's, I don't know if there's one case, maybe, you know, I, it could prove me wrong, but I don't think it's been one case that we've notified that we've transmitted in school. So what that says is that the mitigation strategies, the controlled environment of the school, and I can only speak facetituit and I'm very proud of the fact of that, that we've been proactive in our metric, including, even up into including this last move to remote, which a number of schools surrounding us didn't, they didn't have our, our rate. Only Marshfield was higher and they went remote as well. But I, but I think that saved us from bringing it into the schools and spreading in the schools. So the spread in schools has been, you know, zero to minimal. So if we look at that metric, that's important. And it was the, one of the big reasons we had to shut down because 9.66, Mr. Hayes, what that meant, what I call was calling collateral damage, was that because of the percent was so high in our town, not only do we have a lot of staff members and students that had COVID positive, but that a lot were quarantining. And we had hundreds quarantining. So, I mean, it's very difficult to run a building when you're, you know, 50 of your staff are quarantining for 14 days. So those are some of the, those are some of the important things that connect with that state number. Do they impact the schools? So there's a good connection there. And we didn't want to go over three times, 9.66, the doctors, all the people in the room were kind of very concerned that, you know, we're three times, we're pushing it here. And the reason to come back was, actually, the reason to delay it those two days, you know, was that same, same thing. We had 10 cases on that Tuesday when we were making that decision. And we didn't feel comfortable, nor did the doctors, bringing our staff and kids back on that Thursday and Friday with another possible surge. We wanted to make sure that that was safe. So we felt two days was worth the wait to get the state report to make sure that our town numbers were going down and that our number of staff and students impacted was going down. And it turned out they were. So I think the caution, caution there was heated and I think it worked because then we went three or four days with no school cases after that 10 number. And the number dropped from, as you said, 9.66 to 8.23. And this week it dropped to 57 members. So I think that number has continued to trickle down. So that does play an important role. But I think that what trumps that is the in school numbers in the transmission in school because schools are safe places for the kids and the staff. Once we get them in because they're all doing what they should be. But I think that's, you know, that's the case. And then we look at surrounding towns as well is, is another factor. You know, because people travel in and out and we also want to keep a pulse of what's happening in other districts. I think when we looked at our numbers at the time, we had 9.66% and Marshfield had 12 point something percent. They moved remote first. We, we went shortly thereafter. I don't think any of We went shortly thereafter. I don't think any of the schools did, but I think what people need to understand is I think some of the schools had 5% or, you know, everybody's over five at the time, but some of them had half of what we, us in Marshfield did. So it's an important number that we are strict on. But I think what we learned from this and why we're coming up with a new metric is that there's needs to be flexibility in this. If you stick one number on all these metrics, then I think in the example I gave, if we just relied only on that 3% and we realized that it was 5% or 7%, and nobody in the schools had it, you know, then I think that wouldn't be prudent. So I think we've had, we have a good balance in this metric. But I also think going along with what Ms. Lindblom said in our new metric or revised metric and way of reporting is that we can collect close contacts, how many people are all close contact with close contacts, staff, students. We also, we also collected data on the number of absences. You know, we saw droves of absences that Monday and Tuesday, we came back, people were keeping their kids home. So the school buildings were empty. And so all those things went into our our decision. And so what we're looking to do, you know, hoping it doesn't happen next time. But even if it happens for a day, we want to be well-prepared that the community has what I'm saying ahead of time. And then they know, okay, and they'll have more numbers and more concrete data on how we make these decisions. So we're working on revising that as we speak.
Great. Thank you. And I appreciate that. I mean, the reason I asked the question is so that, you know, people watching and and people who may be concerned about going back to hybrid with certain numbers still out there. You've explained it very well as to as to why you made your decisions, and both decisions, the two-day delay and the and the decision to go back to hybrid were made and on what basis. And obviously, I I support it 100%, but I just think it's important in this forum to to explain that. And I appreciate you doing that. And but, you know, as we go forward, especially as we're looking at February vacation, I I I think it's incumbent upon me or someone to to just plead with our families. Our families can keep us going hybrid with decisions that they make, not only on a daily basis, but on when vacations arrive. I mean, they can keep us hybrid or they can keep us remote. And so I just plead with the families of Situate to to think about that when, as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. And I I couldn't agree more with you. I think you know, we're at the mercy, and what the saying I have is the outside actions impact our schools. So, you know, and I know there's a lot of sacrifice out there. And I know it's tempting to want to go skiing and to go out and travel and do things. But I hope we learn our lesson from this. That was a good part of the reason why our our town numbers went up and we weren't able to come back to school. So I think from February vacation up, I am concerned. I think we're going to do some promotions to get the word out there, but if anybody's watching and you know, I heed Mr. Hayes' advice, those outside actions do directly impact our ability to stay in our hybrid or even continue to have these conversations about how do we bring more students back? I mean, that can't even be on the table if our numbers are up at 9%. I mean, it's just not, it's not feasible.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? All right. Yeah, I just want to echo what Mr. Hayes said to Superintendent Burkett. I really appreciate, I think that I, as well as everyone appreciates the the work that goes on behind in terms of making decisions and 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 if folks don't think that it's kind of like calling a snow day where you check the weather and, you know, you do a couple of things here and there and and decide, oh, I'm just going to go, I'm going to go remote. It's not. You have a team behind you. Obviously, you're the one that makes the final decision, but you take the advice and the guidance of your team. And as you expressed eloquently, your decision is not taken lightly. You take very full responsibility for it, and we appreciate that. But again, we've, as a school committee member, all of us have received emails asking, you know, or recommending that we go back full in person, or that we immediately go immediately go to hybrid or whatever. And and I want all of those folks to know whether you've been thinking about writing an email or you have. There is lots that goes on behind these decisions, and I want you to have faith in our leadership team that they're doing what's best for our district. So again, thank you for your leadership under this difficult time.
And thank you, Mr. Gates. And I do want to just share my own personal philosophy is that, you know, I wouldn't send, I wouldn't open schools based, like I said, we have doctors and medical experts, and we look at the data. So I don't, you know, I don't make this decision alone. But I wouldn't bring, I I try to treat every child as if they were my own. So would I want my kids coming back to the school in this environment with the numbers I know? And my wife's a teacher. Would I want my wife to go into that building tomorrow, knowing the numbers that I know? So I want people to know that this is personal to me, that, you know, and no matter what decision I make, it's it's a snow day on steroids, because half the people are going to be upset with you. So I kind of miss snow day calls. These are a lot tougher. So but I just want people to know it's it's not personal. I get it. I know at home, I'm living it. I've got older kids, but, you know, I empathize with you, and I know this is very difficult for all of us. We want our kids back in school. We all want normal. There's not a person I've spoken to, an educator, a custodian, a bus driver, cafeteria worker, a parent, school community member, or a staff member that does not want that with all their heart. So I think we've just done a good job of listening to all the voices and just trying to keep a balance and trying to do it consistently and rationally. So we'll continue to do that, and we'll get better at our communication, and I think that will also help. So thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. Again, thanks for all the work. Really appreciate it. Again, the transparency that you've shown, I think, is quite remarkable. And you were sending out, you're extending out communications nearly every day, it seems, especially when we have a new case. I know we just got one at 6 o'clock. You magically sent out a notice as you were on the meeting. So you're always working. So thanks very much for that. We have no other questions or comments. We will move on to Ms. Boebert and the special education report.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Chairman Gates, members of the school committee and members of the Situate School Committee. So I am going to try to share my screen unless, am I a co-host? I am, right?
Yes.
Okay, let me try that. Um, here we are. Okay.
You're good. I can see it.
Okay, you can see it. Now I gotta do slideshow.
Yep.
Um. Okay. All right. So what I wanted to do to, oh, let me go back one. What I wanted, okay. What I want to do today is, when I presented a couple of months ago, it was a lot of information. And it was kind of an overview of special education and some regulations and things like that. So today, what I wanted to do, let me minimize. Is kind of dive in a little bit more and talk about the types of disabilities. So if you recall, last time I had this slide, and I talked about the percentages of students in each building that are on IEPs. So as of October 1, you can see that the elementary schools range from 10 to 14%. Gates Middle School was almost 14%, and High School was 13%. Those are pretty good statistics, because the state average has been hovering around 18% for the last three years. So, you know, those are pretty good. But what I wanted to do tonight is just dive a little bit deeper into what are the students, their classification of disabilities, and then just touch upon some of the audits that we're going through or about to go through. So new slide here. So basically, you know, Massachusetts has been a leader in special education with our Chapter 766 that was created in 1972, which was basically modeled after the Civil Rights Law for equal access for students with disabilities. And it became a special ed law, Massachusetts and other states followed suit. The federalized the IDEA Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. But we used to not have to determine a category. We could just say, oh, the student has a disability. But they basically have changed that. So Massachusetts has 13 categories. So autism, which most people know about autism, and there's some research out there that, you know, there's one in 68 people have autism. Autism is basically defined as nonverbal or verbal communication impairments and social interaction limitations. For all these disabilities, we need to do an assessment in the area of a suspected disability. We use our therapists, we use our special ed teachers, we use our psychologists, and we also have sometimes outside experts help us in identifying what the disability is. So you can see my little puzzle here. This is from Autism Speaks, I believe. But basically, you know, it can be, you know, a difficult task, because kids are kids, and they don't always fit into one category. Unfortunately, we do have to put a label on them to then determine their eligibility for special education. But we do recognize, like, the whole child first. The disability categories help us, because it does help us then provide interventions that these students need to make progress. Just as Ms. Mccone and Principal Beatty Be shared about the language-based learning program that they have at the middle school. Those are the kinds of interventions and programs we can provide once we have the disability. So the next disability category here is developmental delay. That's the only one that is could be a delay, not necessarily a disability. So some students are going to demonstrate some impairment or delay compared to typical age students. It's only appropriate for ages three to nine. So developmental delay is often used for the preschool and kindergarten students. And then by the time they're nine years old, we need to find another disability, or maybe they're not eligible and they've made enough progress. Communication is an impairment in either expressive language, how they're expressing themselves, whether it be with their vocabulary, their grammar, or their articulation, or their receptive language skills, how they are understanding language. Health is can be a little misleading, because it encompasses medical disabilities, but it also includes attention deficit disorder with or without hyperactivity, probably because that can be medically treated with medication. But health is a the federal definition is other health impaired, and that also does include the ADHD, and that is fairly prevalent. Specific learning disability, basically, that can refer to dysgraphia, which is a impairment in in writing, dyslexia, most people have heard of impairment in reading, or dyscalculia, which is impairment in mathematics calculation. To determine a specific learning disability, we need to rule out that the primary factor of why the student isn't learning at what we would expect is because of the learning disability and not because of another disability. Emotional disability is related to several factors. It can refer to students that have an anxiety disorder or mood disorder, such as depression or bipolar disorder. They, again, just like specific learning disability, we need to rule out that that's the primary reason for their inability to learn. It's not because of other disabilities. And it needs to be for a long period of time that they're demonstrating this impairment. And they also need to show inappropriate behaviors or feelings under typical circumstances. And they often demonstrate difficulty maintaining relationships with either their peers or adults. Intellectual disability is what we typically define as cognitively limited, as assessed by an IQ score. But it's also important to show that there's adaptive skills, because some students might be kind of like street smart, but not what you would call like book smart, but that doesn't mean that they're intellectually impaired. And we also need to make sure that they have had exposure to, you know, curriculum and learning opportunities. Physical disability is could refer to orthopedic impairment, could refer to cerebral palsy as well. Neurological, that one is also a little bit fuzzy. So the federal definition is traumatic brain injury. So any kind of you know, injury to the brain. But the state's definition is a little bit broader, and it includes basically an impaired nervous system. It could include impairments or limitation in memory, cognitive functioning, sensory motor skills, information processing, social skills or basic life skills. Almost done with these. Sensory impairment is not the kind of sensory that you would think about with an OT, like a sensory processing issue. It's really is one of the senses of vision or hearing. And so there's three categories within that, either deaf, blind or deaf-blind. And then multiple disabilities is usually one, more than one disability, more I would say more intensive type of a disability, such as intellectual impairment and autism, or vision impairment, and maybe a communication impairment. So those are the disability categories. The, I looked at basically the percentages. So where does the Situate Public School students, where do they fall in? And so this includes our out-of-district students as well. So you can see that the most prevalent disability category is the specific learning right here, which is 26%. See that? And that is followed by developmental delay, which is 18% of our students on IEPs make up, have a developmental delay classification. We also have 16% under the health impairment and 12% for autism. And also 12% for communication. So that's district-wide, gives you a picture. Then what I did was I looked at all the students on IEPs at the four elementary schools and grouped them together. I didn't want to, you know, over identify one you know, any students confidentiality or anything like that. So I felt like it would be best to show it over the four elementary. And you can see this developmental delay is the biggest one at 45%. And then followed by specific learning disability at 19%. So again, the the developmental delay is up to age nine. And specific learning disabilities, you know, we as schools are getting better at identifying them at earlier levels. But typically, you know, fourth grade, third, fourth, fifth grade is where we we might see that that they have that gap between their cognitive ability and their academic achievement that demonstrate that discrepancy. 18% here is, whoops. I believe that one is communication. Yep, communication. All right. Then I looked at the middle school, and I apologize, I did have a typo on your printout that you got, members of the school committee. I forgot to include health, which is pretty big, but we have here, whoops, sorry about that. Browser likes to jump around. Okay. At the middle school, we have 41% are specific learning disability, followed by 24% for health. So I had forgotten to include the the health. And then we have 16% that are communication, not 21% on your slide. So that's a fairly high amount. I think that the program that Ms. Mccone and Principal Beatty talked about, students in that program, they could qualify under specific learning disability or the communication category. Then looking at the high school, you can see here, similar to the middle school, we have 30% of students on IEPs are classified as having a specific learning disability. And then 20% as having health impairment. That includes the ADHD. And then this one is kind of unusual, 16% neurological. And I don't think it's for TBIs. It's really more about the executive functioning and the processing of information. For out-of-district, I didn't do a little pie chart, but basically, you know, the the highlights of the students that are attending the out-of-district schools that are publicly funded, the the big category was autism. So 28% of students who are attending out-of-district schools have that classification. And then that's followed by emotional disabilities, multiple disabilities, specific learning disabilities, health and intellectual. So in summary, you know, the most common disability in the elementary school students that are on IEPs is the developmental delay. Most students at the middle school and at the high school that are on IEPs are coded as either having a specific learning disability or health. And then most students are out of district are classified as having autism, then followed by emotional impairment. And again, like I mentioned earlier, you know, it's just kind of a, these are their primary disabilities, so some might have a secondary disability. But I just want people to know that, you know, we realize students don't always fit into one box. We, the disability classification helps guide our interventions, but it's also really important that we're flexible to meet the needs of the whole child in whatever area that they need services, kind of regardless of that label. The good news is some students with developmental delays, they make enough progress to exit special education. Students with specific learning disabilities, communication and health impairments usually make effective progress within the public school and we can definitely provide for their needs. Students with autism and emotional disabilities as well as vision and hearing impairments, which I didn't mention, we have very few that have that as their primary disability. But they often require specialized programming. And some of that could be within our public schools, some of that, you know, at, at other programs. And I guess one of the reasons for kind of doing this work is that we, we want to be mindful of where our resources are and make sure that we're allocating those resources based on not only the disability patterns, but also the intensity or the impact of the disability. And then just a brief update, so we are finishing up. We had an audit about our circuit breaker. If you remember back in October, I talked about the circuit breaker system and how it's a complicated file that we have to input data based on our tuitions, based on our IP services. We, there were some mistakes that had been made. And so we're probably gonna not get as much as we thought we were gonna get, which was a million, 106,000 was our net amount. And then we were gonna get, I believe, that much back. So we might be down about 40,000 or 50,000. But the good news is, you know, we're keeping track now so that we will avoid those kind of mistakes in the future. The other thing that's coming on, so a big audit year, I guess, is that every five or six years, all districts are evaluated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, typically on timelines and compliance with regulations like class sizes and special ed substantially separate classrooms and making sure that the ages of the students are not over four years and making sure we have more peers in our preschool integrated classrooms and students with disabilities. The other part of the, that evaluation is civil rights, looking at discipline data and restraint data and things like that. So that'll be a part that Assistant Superintendent Arnold will be working on and I'll be working on the special education. It used to be called coordinated program review. I don't know if, for, for those of you that have been on the school committee for a while, you might recall that. And we, we start out with the self-assessment. We do a lot of kind of internal audits of our records and upload data. And then that will happen in the spring. And then we'll have our interviews and meeting with this department next year. As part of that, they send out a survey to parents of special ed students and they interview various people, including principals and parents and myself. So I think that's it. If you have any questions.
That was great, Ms. Bulbert. It gets helpful to, again, to see all the different types of students that we're providing services to. So I appreciate, I think, as a parent of a child with special needs, I think that I'm kind of in that world. But if, if, if you're not, then you don't realize, you know, again, all the services and great things that we are required to, but also do actually provide. So thank you for identifying in this particular manner. Any comments or questions from the committee?
No, I just want to thank Michelle for that report and I hope we keep getting a lot more. So, and, and thank you for, for what you've done so far. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Good. Glad to have you.
I agree with Mike. There was a lot of good information to hear and it's good for us to hear that on a regular basis, just how much work is being done by the special ed department. I guess the only question I have is just as you look at the services that we provide today, do you see ways we can improve those coming up, either through the, the budgeting process or, you know, services that we, we could provide that would, would help these students a little bit more or some of the out-of-district students that we, you know, have to send to another school?
Well, it's, it's about the programming that we can provide and kind of building that program. So like they were talking about the language-based learning program at the middle school, there is the younger program, which is great. So that those kids learn those skills so that they don't have to go to Landmark. I think we have good, you know, in-house programs. But we, we also have to recognize, like, we can't do everything for everybody. So there will always be that need for some of the out-of-district. But it's hard too, because sometimes there's a bubble of students in one, you know, grade level and one disability and they're not, like, you really want to make sure that the kids have a cohort, like a peer group too. So that's where we have to always be kind of assessing our resource allocation and where we want to move the services along with the students. I mean, one of the things that I noticed is, you know, we, we'll have less than three occupational therapists here. If 2.7, it'd be great to be able to add on to that because a lot of the kids with the intensive disabilities do get, you know, the therapy. And so we just have to be, you know, mindful of that to make sure that they're getting all the services that they can here. We have the BCBA's here, which are wonderful, such a great asset to have in a relatively small district and we have two. So, yeah, we're just trying to keep up. I mean, I'm still sort of in the overall assessment, but I think we have great teachers and great administrators and, and of course, families and, and students. But we, we do have to recognize, we can't do everything for everybody, but we want to do what we're doing well for those that we can.
Right. And I'm sorry, my question is more based on, you know, we saw the middle school presentation earlier tonight and we saw how well, you know, expanding one program for a group of kids could help. So that's where my question is going. I agree we can't help every kid, but it's great to see where we have, like the JEMM program and can expand it to the middle school.
Exactly. Well, they have, right, they kind of have expanded it into the middle school and we're collaborating and working on that even for, you know, a little bit more for next year. But again, depending on where those students are and that's where those services have to follow them from school to school. Right?
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I, I have one, Ms. Bulbert. You mentioned the audit issue on the circuit breaker. Does, two questions relative to that. How often, do you know how often that audit process takes place?
So they, what they do is, it's interesting because I've been doing circuit breaker for 14 years now. So they, they, they pick on, I shouldn't say they pick on, but they select districts to audit who don't go to the training. They offer training, so they keep track of that. They also, what they told me is we were, Situate was selected because we hadn't been audited for a while. So they look at that. If, you know, if, if you have like unusual claims, they might look at auditing. You know, it's a lot different now than it used to be because they would, we would just have all the records. They would come, they would do it. And now everything has to be like scanned and uploaded and it's all, you know, virtual. So the time was probably, you know, coming for a while. I don't know if it's like an IRS audit where you get audited once, you're more likely to be audited again. I hope not. I don't know. But they're, they're great. They're, they're nice people. And, you know, sometimes mistakes are made, like some were made in our favor. So I was able to correct that. So we didn't claim for things that we could have claimed, but then we overclaimed for services or tuitions that we didn't do. So that's why I estimate about 40,000 to 50,000, but it'll be taken out of what we get reimbursed. And like I said, you know, I'm working with the new, you know, Ministry of Assistant. We're working with Cindy at the business office and we're, we're trying to like just keep track of all these things now so that when you go and you do all that data, it's all organized. We'll do better.
And do you know, is it just audit of the prior year or does it go back a number of years?
Nope, just this past year. So the 20, so the circuit breaker that was put in, in July of 2020 was for the 2019 school year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. That's great. That's all I had. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thanks again for your time and your presentation.
Thank you.
Mark. All right, Superintendent Burke, I actually had one question relative to you and/or Dr. McGuire. Going to reference how to report, how best to report? And does it also, I know that we have some policy about punishments. Is it also going to highlight the applicable punishment relative to? Or is that too broad in terms to list specific punishments on certain crimes, I would say?
Do you repeat the first part of the question, Chairman Gates?
Yeah, just relative to the, to the, I guess, I'm gonna call it the policy that you're working towards submitting to the school committee. Is it, is it going to address, could you, I guess, could you give some more examples or more details about? Is it relative to how best for students or staff members to report behaviors that they think are not appropriate?
Yes, so it goes into kind of the protocol for reporting and investigating discrimination, harassment and retaliation. Talking about kind of the goals, giving some definitions around harassment, discrimination, a complaint. Then going into really the protocol and the responsibilities of who does what in that situation. Who is it reported to? What's the reporting process? What's the timeline? What's the investigation look like? Similar to our bullying procedures or our harassment investigations. Goes through kind of the steps, it goes through what information can we share with the public? How do we keep files and records on what happens? It's really kind of that. I think what we're missing in, in building some of the trust with the, with the community of there's a lot of information under FERPER that I can't share with you. So how do you know that that gets done? And how do you know that that gets done with fidelity? And I think that having the policy and the protocol in place to say when an incident occurs, no matter what is reported, this is what we do. And we are able to show that through the records and through the, the information that we gather and through the consistency across schools and across administrators, that would really go a lot, a, a, a long way with our town for saying, hey, you know, we have a system in place and, and we handle that fairly. I think the place for the, as you talk about kind of what happens, we're doing that with our school handbooks and where, and our, our school site councils in talking about what is the range of, of discipline or consequence that happens when a situation occurs? And there are pros and cons to reporting that out. Certainly, we don't want to pigeonhole one student or one circumstance or one event. We want to be able to have flexibility because these are very individual circumstances. But we can also share, this is what we look at. Certainly, an instance of, of hate or hate crime is a higher level offense than being tardy to class. And, and we want to represent that as well and kind of be fair in that regard. But also have the flexibility, we implement restorative practices. That is not in lieu of a punitive suspension or something that would happen as a consequence. Those go hand in hand together. And we want to be able to bring all of that really to the community so that we can say, this is what we do. We have confidence in that. We want our students to feel safe in how they report and what's gonna happen with that information. I think a lot of students feel like maybe they're gonna get in trouble if they report or there's gonna be some negative kind of backlash from reporting. And we want to be able to eliminate that and protect those who come forward as well and do the right thing.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I think that as we address those, as you mentioned, I think they will really help everyone through this process. And this is not to put any pressure, but how, when do you think the first version of the policy would be submitted to our subcommittee? Is that like three, four months away? Just curious, I'm not holding you to anything, but just curious to get it out there.
I think we're closer than that in a draft. There are some great models that have gone through the process in peer districts. So we've looked at those, we've looked at what would work for Situate, some of that language. And I think now it's taking it the next steps through, through our attorney, through our, our leadership team and then bringing it forward to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Chairman Gates, just to piggyback on that, I think it was well said, just the, there's a, a process that Dr. McGuire and her team are working on, it will be going out for the high school. And then the policy that you mentioned there. We've got a team working on that, like Lisa said, and then we're gonna vet that through all of our, our teams so that when it comes to the school committee, policy subcommittee, there'll be a polished version there that has gone through a lot of eyeballs and a lot of versions and edits. And we're, we're trying to put this on the fast track. So we're not talking months, you know, we're, you know, maybe a month to the latest, but we're, that is being worked on as we speak.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think it's great work and just, you know, in light of events over the last six months, I think this is, this is, this is a great next step. And once we have it in place, I think it'll allay a lot of concerns that have been mentioned. So thank you for that.
Agreed. Thank you.
Peter, can I ask a follow-up to that?
Yes, Mr. Long.
So Superintendent Burke, I know we talked about this a little bit in a phone call earlier today, but I know we can't share a lot of information, the specific information about the cases that pop up. Do we have, and obviously in the emails we've seen over the past couple of days, is, you know, a, a big focus on this in the town. Do we have, are we looking at as part of the policy, just some way to, in general terms, say, these are the issues that came up? This is, and then more importantly, here's the resolution steps that we can take in order to just share with the community, you know, these are the things that we're seeing. We can't get into every detail, but here's what we're doing from a restorative process to educate students on the impact of, of some of the actions that they might have on, on other students or staff.
Yeah, I think looking at the, a couple of the examples that have already been shared with me from other districts they're using, they do provide examples of that, a range of restorative practice examples that people will know that, okay, if X happens, then this is what the outcome will be. This will, but what our response will be so that people have an idea, okay, we're handling this and this is some of the, you know, X, Y, and Z that will happen with this person. And so that'll be spelled out. And then when something happens, people could be able to go to that and look at it and say, okay, we know one of these things is happening in this category because that happened. So that's, you know, the probably the closest thing we can do without coming straight out and doing a summary of any kind of, you know, specific incident because obviously that would violate laws. But I, I think that's what the schools that we're looking at, that are doing this well, have done and had success with. And that's part of the research process that our team is working on now is, you know, reaching out to those groups and, and looking at their documents and then following up with, you know, has that been, you know, how has that worked and how does it fit Situate best? So I think those are the next steps for us, but that will be included, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, gonna move forward. Again, this is the first opportunity for public comment. Before I do open it up for public comment, I just personally wanted to make a few. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen. What I wanted to do is, over the last, I don't know, several months, I guess, we've had some complex discussions, some sensitive topics, where we heard comments from the public. And obviously, there were concerns addressed to the school committee to potentially come up with some norms or policy or something to that degree. Ms. Brandalini agreed to take on, you know, I guess, some responsibility in terms of looking at ways that we could potentially implement that. And she did great work, provided some other policy-type documents that other districts, either local or afar, had, had, had implemented. I looked at those. I also looked at some others on my own. And ultimately, I looked at those. I also looked at some others on my own and ultimately as the Chair of the School Committee, I am choosing to, at this point in time, currently remain with our policy, which I'm going to just highlight a couple of things here. And also, in the research that I did, it's really difficult to limit someone's First Amendment rights. Though you may not agree with what a person is saying, they have the right to say that. It's unfortunate. It's a very difficult situation and we're obviously not the only public body that's dealing with these types of comments or with this uncomfort level or or level of uncomfortableness. But unfortunately, I'm not willing to risk limiting someone's First Amendment rights by doing so. So I absolutely will continue to look at this if we have situations either tonight or in the future that we will look to draft a policy as it relates to it. But at this point, I'm not comfortable in doing so. So with that being said, I just wanted to highlight some of the, some of the bullet items on our current public participation meeting policy, which is policy BEDH. In here, it actually states under item number one, that speakers will be allowed five minutes to present the material. This is actually the entire public comment is only required to be five minutes. We have never, no chairperson in my, in my history has ever limited that and we're not going to do that. And it does say here that the chairperson may may permit extension. That will remain. We just asked that each person try to limit their comments to three minutes. If it does go over, I might just remind them and I I I will probably allow them up to five minutes. Another important item here is number two. Any comments that are that are to be made or made at this particular meeting must only pertain to anything that's on the school committee meeting agenda. If you do make some sort of comment and we potentially give a response, we could violate the open meeting law and we don't want to do that. Item number three somewhat addresses some of the concerns that were brought up, but not entirely. Says improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, chairperson may terminate. This is not relative to First Amendment. This is if they, I would say, in my opinion, use swear words or something denigrating to some other individual specifically. I don't necessarily think that it limits their ability or or First Amendment rights. And again, that's my interpretation. And item number five, speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them. But in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school committee. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. And it goes on, but those are the items that I really wanted to highlight tonight in light of some of the other public comments that we've had. I hope you all can understand that. I really don't want to create a policy specific to public comment. Again, if we get into a complex situation again, we may have to move forward with that. And I hope that the school committee in its entirety can can support me in doing that. But again, this is my decision right now as a chair, and again, this may change in the future. Last thing in terms of public comment. It has been brought to our attention that some folks do not want to state their address. We only ask that because it needs to be part of the public meeting notes. And we have a note taker on the meeting every night, Jeannie. And in order to make her life easier, it's just easier if you give her your name and address. If you are not comfortable with stating your name and address, at this point in time, your name and your school affiliation will work. We're working some other manner so that you, if we were in person, we would ask if you weren't comfortable that you could sign a paper when you were there, just stating your name and address. And then when you spoke, we could identify it. But right now, remote, we just don't have a great way to do it. So for that time being, name and school affiliation. And I may have gone out, but I still see Jennifer Sabatino with your hand raised.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I figured I would take a cue from Superintendent Burkehead and start with something positive. Since Ms. Boebert spoke, I, and my son is one of those students who has intensive needs. I thought I'd say thank you and give a shout out to Emily Ross, his teacher at the PLC. She has done a phenomenal job this year with remote instruction. I, I'm a teacher myself and observing the way she has taught remote lessons to kids at the PLC, both of that age and special ability level has been remarkable and she is truly talented and deserves credit. And I would also love to call out his teacher at the ECC, Emily Baird, who, I mean, yeah, Emily, no. I'm sorry, Jessica Baird, who did an amazing job and really went above and beyond. So I figured I would start with that. Also that I was very glad to hear conversation about restorative justice in part of the discussion tonight because, and I don't know if any of you have seen my email, not only is my son a member of the PLC, he is also a by indigenous person of color. And so I have significant concerns about what's going on right now. And I'm sorry, I did not state my address. It's to Trudy's Lane. So, and he's a student, obviously, at the Hathaway because he's in the PLC. I was very happy to hear about the restorative justice element. One thing I, a couple of things that I wanted to bring up and hopefully see and suggest were a social emotional element, social emotional learning element to this new process. I think that if you don't have students engaged at that level with their teachers, they're not going to trust their teachers and they won't then speak to what they see happening. And I also think it is extremely critical that we involve students, particularly students of color and from other vulnerable committed communities, as well as their families into this discussion. We need to hear what they are seeing and hearing. And I think that has to be a critical part of this process. And so that was my suggestion and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Nicole Gracia.
Hi, Nicole Gracia. I am the STA co-president. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Dr. Dutch, Superintendent Burkehead, Mr. Dillon, and everyone else who's been involved with the evaluation and subsequent repairs of our building's ventilation systems. This was a learning curve for so many of us at the outset of the planning of reopening this fall. The efficacy of our school's ventilation systems was on the minds of the majority of our staff members and it caused a great deal of worry as we prepared to open. Of this team shows a tremendous commitment to the safety of Situate Public School students and staff, and it is greatly appreciated by all of us as this is not the top priority in every school district from what I'm hearing. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to all that work that's been done.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Carrie Burkowski.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. Carrie Burkowski, I have three kids at Hathaway Elementary. I just want to say with all due respect, Chairman Gates, I would urge the school committee to reconsider the decision not to adopt some sort of policy around the kind of rhetoric that we we express in these meetings. I know that you, I'm guessing that you didn't mean this, mean it this way, but by claiming a First Amendment right, it feels very dismissive of the trauma and upset that marginalized individuals feel and not thinking that that targeting a specific group of marginalized individuals is not abusive. Again, feels very dismissive. And I know firsthand because I talked to many people who tell me that even though they have kids in these schools, they do not attend these important school committees because they cannot manage and navigate some of the abusive language that is permitted in these public comments. So I'm just asking that the school committee think again about what you can do to align yourself with this, this need to respect the First Amendment, but also to protect these groups that have to listen to this kind of abusive language in a public comment. Everyone should have the right and ability to attend these meetings. And there are some people who are not coming because of the language that is permitted during these meetings. Thank you.
So I froze. Ms. Burkowski, I, this is a very difficult issue for me. I spent a lot of time researching, looking at other districts and yes, other districts do make mention to have a policy. From my initial findings, and again, this is going to be ongoing for sure. It will be ongoing because it's an important topic. I, I I just didn't feel comfortable at this point in time in 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 creating a policy. I, I hope I did not disrespect you or anyone in so doing. That was not my intent. I understand that comments at last meeting were hurtful to folks and I absolutely recognize it. I felt similarly. My issue is that I just want, I just want to be sure that we're not limiting First Amendment rights and some of my research showed that some policies potentially could toe that line. And I just didn't want to do that. I want you to recognize that. I understand your position. This is not the end of it. I will continue to look into it and and see how best to proceed. I hope you can understand that. I will. I, I I was hurt by comment, oh, not hurt, I recognized the hurt by other folks with comments that were recently made. I do, I do.
Yeah, and I'm not, let me be clear, Chairman Gates, I'm not accusing you, you know, it just feels, I'm telling you how I'm feeling when I hear you say that and I understand what you're saying. I guess I would just, you know, on the heels of the discussions we've been having and that Dr. Magua has shared with respect to policy and what's been going on at the high school. I also feel like this is a perfect opportunity for us as adults to be modeling how we should be engaging with one another. And if we're not showing our young people in the town that we have a way to manage the kind of language that's permissible in these meetings, how can we expect our students to act appropriately when we're, they'll just say, oh, it's First Amendment. I have a right to say that. There has to be a limit. First Amendment only goes as far as when you harm another person. And so I'm just saying that if we want our students and our young people to act appropriately, respectfully and kind to one another, we should hold the bar at the same level for ourselves in these public meetings. That's all I'm saying. And so I hope that as we continue to have these conversations, we will think about the fact that we're trying to educate our students. Well, we also need to be educating ourselves and modeling the kind of behavior we want to see in our schools. So, thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. We will move forward with new business. School Mental Health Resources, Ms. Jen Arnold, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I'm just going to share my screen here. So I'm here to talk about, my first presentation is about what we're doing to support all of our students and their social emotional health during this challenging time. This is by no means an exhaustive list or a description, but I did want to let people know what we've been doing and what kinds of resources we can offer to families. So we in Situate have always been, have always recognized the importance of social and emotional learning and supporting our students' mental health. It's foundational. If students do not feel safe or if they are, you know, struggling with their own social or emotional feelings, they are, they can't learn. They have to feel comfortable and safe and know that they're supported by adults around them or have trusted adults in order to be learners. So when we think about, I always do that, when we think about the importance of social emotional learning, you know, the impacts are that there's an improvement in students' social emotional skills, their relationships, academic performance, classroom and school climate. And it really helps to decline student anxiety, behavioral problems and in some instances, substance abuse. How do we? How do we support our students? And I've broken it down by elementary, middle and high school. And we're, again, I just want to reiterate, it's by no means exhaustive. There's a lot more going on than is in this presentation. So I thought I'd start out with this nice little cute picture here. This is Maggie. She is a support dog who hangs out at Jenkins. And she provides a lot of comfort for kids. They can read to her, just be around her if they're feeling anxious. So that's a nice thing to say, to have. In the elementary schools, these are some of the things that that are, that regularly happen. So Open Circle Lessons, Open Circle is the social emotional curriculum, positive reinforcement curriculum that we've been using in the Situate Public Schools for many, many years. And the schools have weekly social skills groups. Those are generally facilitated by the school psychologist or maybe the school counselor. Constant reach out to outreach rather to families with struggling students to offer, offer support for their children. The school-based health and wellness team meet weekly to discuss student and family needs. At Jenkins, we called this the FAST team, family and student support team, and it was made. The members of the team would be the principal, the school nurse, the guidance counselor, the school psychologist, and any other teacher would come and visit the meeting if they had someone to report on. And what the teams then do is they develop a plan, assign responsibility for who will reach out to the family and who will gather resources for the family. And that, that's not just during the pandemic. That's has always been ongoing. Teachers are always connecting with students who are working remotely during either the morning or afternoon check into, just to be sure that they're doing well. And that's because elementary, as you know, it's cohort A in the morning, cohort B in the afternoon. So when they are remote, even though they're not in front of that teacher, they're still checking in with them. Parent professionals are assigned to students for weekly check-ins as well. And then each school has a student, a social emotional learning team. And they meet bi-weekly to discuss ideas and plans and how they are going to roll out some of these, some more supports for families. Gates Middle School, but doing a lot of different things. They, of course, have their advisory meetings with their counselors. Students have their advisory meetings rather. They have weekly lunches, which I think is pretty cool for cohorts C students. And they're able to interact with their peers and teachers. They have an affinity lunch called the BIPOC affinity lunch and BIPOC stands for Black, Indigenous and other people of color. I know that we're seeing that term more and more, so I just thought I'd take the opportunity to explain it in case people haven't seen it before. They have weekly enrichment sessions that focus on academic and or social emotional needs. They recently had their winter spirit week and again, ongoing communication with at-risk students care providers. Same thing at the high school, ongoing family outreach and collaboration, focusing on those struggling students. Uh, counselors hold individual meetings with their students. The principal might meet with a student family, teacher, counselor, um, or other admin building leaders to have a roundtable meeting to discuss what's going on with the student and figure out how to support that student so that they can be successful during this time. Um, and they, they've started this thing, these evening sessions, which are facilitated by high school staff. And they discuss different topics, again, focusing on student well-being and academic success. It's called partnering during the pandemic. And then they have built a counseling resources page, and I'm going to show you that in just a moment, which is full of lots of different articles, links to resources or organizations. And it's pretty cool. So let me get to that page. So this, um, Situate Supports is the name of the site and it appears on, under both the high school and Gates School Counseling websites. But basically underneath what it does is it provides COVID-19 pandemic-specific support. Um, and then there's also a referral service that, that information for referral service. And then another section, coping tools and strategies. And while this is underneath the, um, high school and middle school, so it's secondary focused or teen-focused, there are also good resources for other families, uh, for families of other students who aren't in high school or middle school yet to use. So I've gone it for you. Um, you can see here, hiding everybody, it's, it's again, COVID-19 support. They have a racial equity and diversity and family resource and then mental health support. So if I go to that page, you'll see the referral service. Um, but if I go back to COVID-19 pandemic support. There, there are links to research sources. And again, you see how to talk with teens about COVID-19, but there's also a link for how to talk to children about COVID-19. Um, and then multiple other sites for families to use. So so I'll end with, um, this quote I found, which I like, just because no one else can heal or do your inner work for you doesn't mean you can, should, or need to do it alone. Um, and then just before I take questions, one other thing that I forgot to mention about the, um, the resources that appear on the middle and high school pages, the mental health resources. I talked to Tammy Rundle and we're going to see what we can do to put this together, what she can put together with the counselors for the elementary sites. Because like I said, some of them are adolescent, teen, secondary student specific. But there are resources out there for elementary students and families as well. Any questions?
Great. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Any comments or questions from the committee?
Um, I'll just say thanks for putting that together, Jen, and I'm glad you're going to address elementary because I think there's a lot of stress with that for families and remote learning and how to kind of manage that during this time because it is extremely difficult for, you know, the parents of the younger grade, um, just dealing with, you know, home, the learning from home component is certainly a challenge. So I think those are welcomed resources for families.
We'll get, we'll get right on that.
Anyone else?
No, I just want to say thank you, Jen, also for putting that together. I think, um, you know, I think we're going to see, you know, a generation of kids that are in parents, you know, everybody that's going through COVID right now, you know, it's, we're going to have a lot of after effects of stress, anxiety, all that social emotional stuff. So it's, you know, it's a major historical event that these kids are going through. And we're going to see the after effects, I think, for years to come. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jen. All right. Uh, now it's right back to you on the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion Job Description.
Right. So, um, I did submit an executive summary for, for the committee to read about this, but basically, um, the difference between this job description, the new updated job description and the previous job description is basically a result of how much we learned during our first search. So unfortunately, we weren't able to hire director after that search, but we also learned a lot during that search. We learned a lot about, not only who was out there doing this work, but also what we really wanted and needed in Situate in this position. So after that process ended and we realized we were going to, we wanted to start this again, we decided that we needed a new job description. So we drafted one and then submitted it to our new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Search Committee so that they could give us their feedback. And I think one of the biggest differences between the two positions, the two descriptions rather, is that this one seems to be a lot more detailed and succinct in terms of and, and less complex. And it really drills down on two major categories that we want this person to focus within. And they are staff and district support and then community engagement. And I think that's the way I perceive it. This person will, it's a district level, central office administrative position. This person will be responsible for everything to do with DEI and cultural proficiency. Not alone, the person won't be alone, but will be a strong voice within those two areas. And the other thing, the other difference in this job description is that we didn't make it just about someone who was, who was experienced, well-versed in, uh, working with people who belong to a BIPOC group, but also we brought in that people should be experienced, have knowledge and passion for supporting people from the LGBTQIA+ communities. So this time it wasn't just about, um, being able to, to help one sort of marginalized group, but now more than one other marginalized groups. And, and we have a significant population of students and staff within Situate Public Schools who belong to that LGBTQIA+ um, group of individuals. So that's another big difference of me is job description. And happy to take questions.
Uh, open up to the committee. Any questions or comments? We will, this will require a vote. So if you have any questions.
I have a question, Peter.
Yes, Ms. Lim Long.
So under the bullet point of understanding trauma, um, it mentions the BIPOC, but I would like it to also specify the LGBTQIA, because they're important as well. And I, they shouldn't be, I don't feel they should be, shouldn't be addressed as like other marginalized. It seems too generic. Okay. Maybe like add by, you know, add the LGBTQ in the other marginalized.
Thank you.
Pete, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why does this require a vote?
It's a, it's a change in the job description. I think generally we-
Well, we don't do the hiring.
No, except for superintendent.
Mr. Hayes, yeah, the, all job descriptions are approved through the school committee. So this this in effect is a modified one. So we want to go by the book and be transparent. And you voted on the first one. So we just wanted to make sure that we got your blessing on this one as well. We'll take care of the rest certainly, but
Fair enough. I just, you know.
That's the background.
Okay.
Yeah, we voted, Mike, we voted on this back in, I was it August, September, I think, is when we vote on the initial one. And then this is just the revision. So it's technically a new job description.
Yep. No sweat.
Um, any other questions regarding this?
Yeah, I just had one. Um, how big is, is the search committee changed at all from what we had initially? Or do we have more or less people? I know there's a lot of interest in it initially.
I'm sorry, is, which, has which changed? The committee, the search committee?
The search committee, yeah.
So we have most of the people back who did it, um, the first time. We had a lot of enthusiasm. People really wanted to do it again. Um, and I actually spoke with Superintendent Burkhead about that. And we felt it was critical, critical to keep the same people. Um, they've invested so much blood, sweat and tears in this process. We do have one or two people who uh, can't make the commitment this time, but have suggested someone else in their place. Like if they're, they belong to a certain group, we wanted community representation, community group representation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, Jen, just, just curious, if do you think that the job description as it existed or any potential changes would, would have changed the initial applicant pool? Or not?
I think it, it would have. Yes, I do. Um, and for a number of reasons, I think this is really, you know, this is very clear. It's a doable position, even though there's a lot to it. Don't get me wrong. It, the other one just felt a little bit more, it didn't feel really tight and it was hard to really navigate and say, what is it that we want this person to do? There was a lot of information in it, but this seems clear. And also we, we opened it up to be so that it does, so we do have a person who will focus not only on people of color, Indigenous people, but other things that affect our students, our staff, and neurodiversity being one. Um, so yes, I think we will. And also the timing, Peter, because, you know, we were asking people to take, to leave their position halfway through the, not even halfway through the year. So this, the description also for the term, we said July 1st or sooner.
Okay.
Chairman Gates?
Yes, Superintendent Burkhead.
May I, before you vote, um, I know our fabulous Metco Director, Michelle Crawford's here and she's uh, the co-chair of the search committee and has put a lot of work into this. I didn't, I didn't know if you would allow her to add anything else or uh, I know she's worked on this as well. Michelle, is there anything you want to add?
Of course. I just asked her to unmute if she would like to speak.
Honestly, I think doing this search this time of year with a more streamlined, uh, job description would produce better results for us. Um, I I think though, the the job description as it was presented before was very ambitious, especially posting it for the amount that it was, was being posted for. So it was a hundred thousand dollars and it was this, this job that many people are doing for 120 per year upwards. Um, so we weren't going to attract the cream of the crop, especially considering the time of year that we had done the search before.
And I would say, just you reiterate, you learned a lot. We learned a real lot through the first process. So it wasn't, um, it wasn't, it definitely was not a waste of time. It was actually good because it helped crystallize what it is we really think we need.
Great. Uh, any other questions or comments? If not, um, do, do we, do we need to make a motion with the amendment? Is that enough to make an amendment from Genesis' recommendation? If so, Janice, I would, uh, you have a motion for us?
I do. Um, I move to accept the DEI job description as amended.
Motion by Ms. Lim Long. And Arnold, do you, do you have the amendments?
Who, Jen, does Jen, just to add those.
Yeah, it's just that one category or that one descriptor of more people.
Okay. All right. So motion by Ms. Lim Long. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Um, well, I will do a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Brandolini?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Uh, Gates, yes. Mr. Long?
Yes.
And Ms. Lim Long?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, thank you very much. So that will, looks like according to timeline, that job will get posted some, tomorrow. All right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This is the second and final opportunity for public comment. If you have a question, please raise your hand and I will ask you to unmute. Again, just a reminder, if you could state your name and address, and if you're not comfortable uh, with your address, please, um, provide your school affiliation. Uh, Jean Schildneck?
Hi, thanks for taking my comment. Um, Jean Schildneck, 511 Heatherly Road. I just wanted to respond to Principal Maguire's, um, comments earlier. I'm really glad to hear that there is some progress being made in terms of policies and procedures um, in terms of reporting incidents of, you know, basically hate-based or bias-based incidents and racist and what have you. Um, I think that's, that's a good step forward. I do have to say that in her comments, her letters, um, the most recent letter that went out announcing the the, the procedure for submitting, um, for, for submitting, um, information about incidents and sharing that information. The, her, the, the condemnation is for the behavior of the kids who are reporting the incidents. Time after time, she condemns them. And she does not condemn the underlying racist behavior. I assume she thinks it's implied, but it is not. And in any of these, in any of these communications, I think the racist behavior needs to be called out and condemned first and foremost before complaining about the kids who are reporting it, even if they are reporting it in an inappropriate way, even if they are reporting it in a way that is harmful. I think that that needs to be a procedure needs to be put in place so that they can do that in a more productive way. But the main problem is the racist behavior and that never is at the top of the list of, of the concerns in any of these letters that come out from her. So I just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Emily Matthews?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Emily Matthews, um, Heatherly Elementary School parent and also a Situate Public Schools employee. Um, I wanted to echo the, um, concerns and urging of, um, an earlier uh, parent, Carrie Borkowski, um, and urging, um, the school committee to do a deeper dive into ensuring, um, the safety of the school committee meetings. Um, you know, something that crossed my mind was mentioning that people are not comfortable giving their addresses and that it may, I, there might, I'm sure there are many reasons why for that. Um, but the mentality to me seems like we, as, as is the nature of a lot of people, um, people of color, LGBTQIA+ people, marginalized groups in general, they frequently have- marginalized groups in general, they frequently have to change their behaviors to protect themselves. And others don't have to. They can continue behaving in the same harmful, hurtful way. And it's on those marginalized groups to change. And I, I, I just urge you to, to look back at that again. If you haven't consulted with an attorney yet, consult with an attorney regarding the First Amendment rights. Because I, I think folks have spent a lot of time, perhaps their whole lives, changing for other people. And maybe that should end. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I, I don't disagree with all, with, with, with the recommendation. And again, I didn't say that that was the final. It was my current decision. I'll continue to look into it. Again, it's not as easy as creating a policy. I mean, I can tell someone to stop speaking whenever I want realistically, especially through these remote meetings. I don't necessarily need a policy for that. I can just mute them. With that being said, I will, I promise I'll continue to look into this to make sure that everyone feels comfortable in these meetings. So that is, that's my promise. And again, this is, this was a decision of, of, of me. This committee hasn't necessarily weighed in on it. Again, it's difficult to do that without violating old meeting law. I think Ms. Brinley gave me the facts and let me make the decision, but that doesn't, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that she agrees with me. But that's how I am chose to progress for tonight's meeting, but I'll continue to look into it. I, I recognize the concerns and, and again, I will continue to look into this.
Peter, can I add context too?
Yes.
So yeah, so I think like, obviously, after our last meeting, you know, our heads were spinning in all different directions on how to best move forward and address things and fix things while respecting, you know, our community. So I did call the Attorney General's hotline and the lawyers there told me that they don't get involved with First Amendment issues, that we should speak to our town attorneys. And so that is something that is on the table to do as well. Should we choose to go that direction? I researched many different districts around us. Hingham, Wellesley, Brookline were the three standout policies. It's no surprise that these things never like to be touched with a 10-foot pole because they're sticky. But you know, that's where usually the most important things lie in those sticky realms. I, I feel personally that there are pieces from, these were just ones that I pulled out. Some towns I found had horrendous ones, worse than ours. And these were three that I had highlighted and in my quick, you know, assessment to get some kind of progress on it by this meeting. And you know, as Peter said, it is, it's a work in progress, but we at least wanted to have a baby step made to at least review what we had and see what was out there. I'm sure there's tons more out there. You know, maybe, I don't know if this is like a subcommittee that the policy subcommittee needs to open up and look at in terms of you know, full assessment and additions and changes, or if we can do it in a meeting. I don't know if just the five of us want to discuss it. You know, I can share these with the full committee. I did just send them to Peter so that he had some grounds for running tonight's meeting. There's a lot to consider certainly, but you know, a lot of it does fall on the chair. I mean, you know, I would say after my initial thoughts, though I didn't say them directly, after you had made your, your comments before public comment, Peter, were that I would support you certainly coming down on anyone who was hateful or disrespectful or out of line or disruptive in a meeting. Like 100%. So maybe we need a more forceful additional pieces to our policies. Happy to send out more of what I've found, or if everybody wants to look and we can collaborate, so.
Well, I'll, we'll talk offline, but I, and this, and this is, again, this is important and we'll get it right. But just with the most recent speaker, in reality, she just violated one of our policies. That's how quickly it can happen. So as much as we can, and this, again, this is not to diminish it, we can have a policy. But in this particular format through Zoom, it truly is the chair's responsibility and I have the ability at this point to limit what people have to say. It's up to my decision. So whether we have a policy or not, it's, it's up to my, it's up to my discretion to allow it. Again, I shouldn't have allowed the other speaker to mention a specific employee. That's not what this is. It's, it's against our policy. But by the time it happens, it was too late and that's how sometimes these things happen. But again, we recognize the concern. We will do the best. We want everyone that wants to participate and attend our meetings to attend our meetings. So we will work with it and, and, and move forward. But again, we, we understand it and and that's where we are right now.
It's hard for us to do these things because we can't really speak the five of us outside of this Zoom with everybody too. It's, it's tricky. I don't know if any other school committee members have thoughts on it. It's hard to, you know, do it.
Yeah, it's one of those things that, Peter, it might make sense to send it to a subcommittee like the policy subcommittee. It'd be interesting to see what our legal counsel says in terms of, you know, what could violate First Amendment rights. I'm sure it'd be a slap on the wrist if we do it once, but I mean, to the points that we made it, it's very valid. And I mean, our policy specifically says defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. I, I think you'd have our full support if you shut someone down for any type of rude comment towards someone else. But I mean, if it's something we need to dig, dig into further, I mean, I think, Janice, I'm putting more work in you and me, but you know, I'm pretty interested in that. The policy subcommittee takes a look at.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the stuff I found like Wellesley, disruptive, disruptive comments and conduct are not allowed. Yep. So it's, it's similar. There's a lot of similarity out there, but maybe there's things I haven't found, which is obviously.
And what I saw, Nicole on that is generally referenced like in a public meeting, if someone stands up and starts yelling, that's disruptive. You know, it's not necessarily what they're saying. It's, it's what they're doing and, and disrupting the meeting.
Right. Disrupting the, the, the normal con- conduct in the meeting, the flow of conduct for the meeting.
Correct. So, all right, so we'll, um, again, we understand the concerns. We are with you. We're with everybody. We just got to, we need to figure out how to potentially, ultimately, the, the goal here is to make sure everyone feels comfortable attending our school committee meetings. That's the goal. And how can we best do that? Do we need a policy or not? That's what we'll have to determine. But thank you. Steve McGuire?
Thanks. I know it's late. I just wanted to share since you're on the meeting topic. I was going to hold off, but I think it's timely to do this now. I would love for the committee to advocate and do everything you can to consider when we get out of the pandemic, to keep doing and having a hybrid Zoom version of your meeting. In the 20 years I've taught in Situate, I've never been to the, sadly, I've never been to this many school committee meetings. And the, the irony of it is, I teach at the high school, I have four kids at Jenkins, our focus is about the kids, but the kids are the reason why I can't go to the school committee meetings. And I think that's not the case for everybody, but it's definitely the case for a lot of people. And to see the numbers even at, you know, 9:15 at night, that there's still 48 people here on a January night, when there's no real like super hot topic, no offense to anybody, you know what I mean? But I just think says so much to the investment of people in town. So I would just love the committee to consider in years going forward, you know, obviously one day at a time, but just to consider this as an option down the road because it really does make a difference for families. Thank you.
Mr. McGuire, thank you very much. We, we, I think everybody agrees. I think everyone in the country agrees. I think they've all had increased participation in public meetings. Unfortunately, we're at the, we're, we have to hear what the state of Massachusetts comes down in terms of having meetings in public. So whatever they allow us to do is what we will maximize. And we have, you know, the man behind the scenes that doesn't really get any credit is Seth from Situate Community TV. He's, he's actually recording this meeting. I mean, he hit, he, he's responsible for recording this, sending it out on Facebook Live and then, and then putting it on the website for people to view going forward. So whatever state allows us to do, as long as they can allow us to continue to have remote meetings like this, we will continue to do that. I agree. All right. So here, here we go. I don't know if Ms. Matthews, if you have another question, but again, that would be in violation of our policy. You're only allowed to make one comment. And I'm not saying that, I'm saying that sarcastically, but that's the truth. We're only allowed to, you're only allowed to make one comment. However, I will, I will ask if you have a further comment to make it this time.
No, I think I was just so nervous for my first comment. My shaky hands raised my hand again.
Don't be nervous.
Sorry about that. Maybe Emily's first comment was as a parent and the second is as an SPS employee.
All right.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. All right. No, again, we appreciate all the comments. Like Mr. McGuire said, I think that it's nice to have people on, in our meetings. More people that are informed means potentially the less questions they have for the superintendent, the less questions they have for the school committee. They're much more informed and understand what, what's happening in our district. We want people to participate. We want them to attend. So we thank you for coming. Whatever we can do to make you feel safe and to make you, you know, the easiest way, the most efficient way to attend, we will welcome that and continue that. So thank you. Moving forward agenda, it is 9:21. We have acceptance of minutes from September 14th. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Long on the September 14th school committee minutes. Roll call vote. Brandalini?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Long?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, subcommittee updates. Do we have any? We don't have any. It's been a couple of weeks since our last meeting. So we know, no subcommittee updates correspondence. We don't have any. Item 11 warrants. Dr. Dutch?
There are two warrants for your attention. The first one is S210114. Signed by committee member Limblom. Total amount is $255,027. There are a few large ticket items, private school tuition at $77,098.65. Electric utilities, $43,157.49. Gas utilities, $18,656.28. Contracted service heat, $63,371.26. That was for repairs to the HVAC system. And that brings the total to 255,027.67. Then the second warrant, S210121, again, signed by committee member Limblom. We did have the IDE grant, the special ed grant, $44,399.54. The warrant total is 197,758.05, of which 131,768 are local funds. The only large ticket item is private school tuition, $62,040.35. I apologize. And also IT contract services for $36,433.68. Certainly be happy to answer any questions that you might have about these.
No, thank you very much. But I do think that you, Dr. Dutch, you know, if we ever go back in person, you gotta, and, and all of our staff has to be physically sitting at the high school until 9:30 at night. It's just not a good, it's not great. So the remote works for everyone that's presenting as well.
Yes, it does.
Yep. So trust me, everyone's hoping that we can continue to, in some degree, remote. Any questions on the warrants? All right, item 12, any other business? Any school committee members have?
Nope.
All right, future agenda items. I just wanted to review for the committee as well as for those that are still here. Now we're down to only 39. We are currently, well, we're really, the leadership team has been in full force working on the budget for next school year. I just wanted to highlight the process a little bit. It's slightly different from what we've done in the past. We will have what is called a school committee budget workshop on Saturday, February 6th at 9:00 AM. This is generally a meeting that is held every year on the first Saturday in February. This is what we call a workshop. This is really the, the school committee's first look into the budget for, for next year, for 2022. Though it is available for the public to zoom in on, because we will hold it remotely, it's really just a workshop for the school committee. There will not be any votes taken. It's just discussion and presentation of the budget. I would recommend it, anyone with interests, they certainly can attend and we will send out the information. But again, this is what we're going to classify as a workshop. Following that workshop on Monday, sorry, uh, in, in late February, we will have our final look at the budget. And that is considered a public hearing. That hearing is required to be published in the local newspaper so that everyone is aware of that. It will either be a separate agenda item on our school committee meeting, or will actually be a separate meeting that will be held right before our school committee meeting. Again, that is a public hearing and it's where the public can be, is their first opportunity for the public to ask questions about the budget. This is how school budgets generally are handled and, and ours in the past was slightly different. But I just wanted to, to let people know that that February 6th meeting at 9:00 AM is a school committee workshop, which is focused on the budget and the budget only. So I want to let the school committee aware of that date. Free up your calendars. Get up bright and early for that one. And then again, I think it's, it's later February, we're going to have that, the final, or sorry, the public hearing, which again, could be a three-hour meeting so that we address all of the questions from the public. Any questions on that? The process or the dates or anything?
Chairman Gates?
Yes.
Before you adjourn, can I say a few words?
Yes, you may.
Thank, thank you, sir. I, I just want to address the, the public comment section and and defend our Dr. McGuire because I think it's important to note that when we, I want to just give the perspective of the administration and what we deal with. When an incident happens, sometimes, most times, social media finds out before we do. And that's kind of what we're talking about tonight is, you know, civil discourse and communication and working together. We're all in this for the kids. Right? We all, we all love these kids. We all want to do what's best for them. But as adults, we need to act civilly and we have to work together. And I think we need to see more of that. And, you know, I think there's a, you know, when we hear of an incident, when it finally gets to us, and the, the most recent incident got to us, Dr. McGuire dropped everything, everything going on that day and got right on this and spent several hours so that she could address it immediately. And I think in, just so you know, she involved people that deal with these professionals that are consultants that deal with us, in-house professionals that deal with us. It wasn't just write a letter and send it out. Learning from other things in the past. So there was a lot of thought in time that went into this in a timely manner. And I just want, you know, to people to know that, that if you do agree with something that comes out from my office or from any of our administrators' offices, you know, send us an email, give us a call. We'd be happy to talk about it. I think that's the best way to kind of get to the bottom of it. I think a lot of assumptions are made. I think there's a lot of trial by Facebook. And you, you don't necessarily have all the facts, trust me. And, and we, and we work to do the best. So we're not here to hurt anybody. We're not here to offend anybody. We are still lifelong learners. So if there's some advice and a lot of We are still lifelong learners. So if there's some advice, and a lot of people have given this, and we we take it, believe me. If if there's something that you didn't like about something that went out from one of us, please just give us feedback in a respectful manner. We'll take it. We'll use it. We want to get better and we want to grow with you. But I want, I want everybody to know that the process of of how things happen and how this particular thing happened. And I just want to give credit to Dr. McGuire that she did take her due diligence to involve a lot of different voices, a lot of different input. Took it very seriously to get out a heartfelt letter to deal with this the best we could. So I wanted to say that. And then I wanted to end on a positive note that January is National School Committee Appreciation Month. So I wanted to.
Wait till, you wait till January 26th to tell us that?
Well, I got four more, five more days.
25th, 25th.
I accomplished two things. I can, I can butter you guys up a little bit and say that I genuinely appreciate all you do. You are volunteers. And I can't imagine, you know, people say the superintendency, the principalship, the teaching, which is all true, has never been harder. But, you know, we all get paid. And you do not. And I know this has never been harder for school committee members. And just wanted to say from the bottom of my heart, I know all of our team appreciate what you do and your support and your, and your grit to be out here and have these difficult conversations. And I get a great example tonight is a public comment that was some difficult conversation. You know, Chairman Gates and Ms. Brinalini could have just said, you know, thank you very much. That's a public comment. You chose to interact with our parents. And I thought it was very fruitful and I thought it was a great example of how things should go. So you're good role models for all of us. I just wanted to wish you a Happy Appreciation Month. And our gift to you tonight is ending the meeting within four hours.
Yeah.
So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I did not know, did you make that up? School Committee Appreciation Month?
I did not look it up. Matt, I can't believe Mask hasn't wished you guys a happy.
Wow.
Maybe they're waiting till the 31st.
Maybe. All right. Well, thanks again for for you and your leadership team. This is, you know, in addition to to putting these these meetings together, these meetings take time to put together. I know that Superintendent Burkhead, you, I will probably say you reply to, if not every email, nearly every email and every one of those responses takes time. And people need to understand that. So we don't just show up to these meetings and talk. It takes a preparation and other, and every communication that you send, again, super, Superintendent Burkhead, you know, his goal is to be transparent. He's done nothing but be transparent and to take the time to respond. Some of these emails are pretty complex, so all of his emails and communications should, shouldn't go unnoticed. So we appreciate the leadership through this difficult time and we look, look for, I guess, better days ahead. But thank you for everything and that'll do it. I have a motion to adjourn at 9:33. Motion by Mr. Long, second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Hayes. Roll call vote. Brandalini?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Long?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much. Have a good night, everybody.